That is a must-see screen.
Thank you.
Headphones for your iPad?
How are you doing?
I'm well.
My hair cut.
Yeah, my hair cut.
It looks like you cut several hairs on this hair.
Three of them.
I don't know about this Saturday. Yes, please. Thank you so much.
That kind of stuff? Then no. Use something else.
Don't worry. It's okay. You're telling me.
We are going below session order at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 25 regular school board meeting for Fullerton School District. Reporting back from closed session, the Board by a vote of five zero approved a settlement between the Fullerton School District and the parents of student 727834. And the district has agreed to fund dyslexia on demand in the amount not to exceed $9,700. Leading us in the pledge of allegiance this evening will be Jackie Gerardo Hoffmeister, please. Thank you.
Please stand and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Recently, a member of our Fullerton community and his wife passed away. And in honor of Abe and Alma Razik, I'd like everyone to please join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you very much.
Just to say, if you remember Abe, he owned the Ford dealership. And he donated all those bicycles to all the kids and then he mentored kids as well. He was just a great partner and a good person.
All right. Thank you very much. Dr. Hammett, will you be leading us in our safety presentation along with Dr. Koglin or Dr. Koglin and Jeremy and Josh?
Yes, this will be a larger presentation this evening. In addition to Dr. Koglin and Jeremy, I have Ray Flores who's here who works with us as a consultant. I have Sergeant Bridges with us from the Fullerton Police Department. And I'll be sharing some information with you. We're very excited tonight to make this safety presentation. Because since our last safety presentation, we have made a lot of strides towards increasing school safety. And we have some very exciting news to report out regarding not only our physical safety, but the emotional and wellbeing that we're providing to students. All right, just some of the things we'll be discussing tonight as a little preview for you. We'll be talking about campus security upgrades. We'll be talking about our staff emergency training. There are the updates that we have on some new legislation out of the state regarding safe gun storage. And what we're doing as a district to help encourage safe gun storage. We'll be talking about emergency drills and procedures. What we do as far as emergency supplies and equipment in case of a disaster and emergency, what we have in place. We will be having an update on our school safety monitors, an update from the Fullerton Police Department, crisis communication, emotional supports and mental health and cyber safety. So a lot of topics to cover tonight. And I promise this shouldn't take longer than two or three hours. Just kidding. I'd like to start out with Dr. Koglin.
Well, I'm happy to report that we are finishing up making our campuses with complete perimeter fencing around them with single points of entry. As you'll drive around the schools, you'll notice that we're 98% done. We will be done by the time school starts. We knew it was going to be a long process just with the supply chain and getting the materials. But I want to thank Scott and his staff. The picture that you see up here is, that's Acacia. We had some challenges with making single points of entry. But Scott and his team did a great job doing that. So, and as far as from the community, we've had actual compliments from the community. So I think everybody's accepting the fact that this is the best way to keep our students safe, our staff safe. And that when school's in session, again, when it's not in session, the campuses are, they're open. So.
One of the other things we did with the fencing is we also increased our signage around the campuses regarding campus hours. And when our campuses close with a single point of entry. And then after school hours, when is the community able to come in and access the campus and our playgrounds as many of our, as our community likes to use the playgrounds? So we have hours clearly posted. We also have clear signs that post our directors tell our visitors to follow directions and go to the school office in order to check in if it's during school hours. So that way we make sure everyone, excuse me, has checked in and has an ID badge. And now we have Jeremy to report on our cameras.
I told Josh you didn't need to come for one bullet point that we took care of before him. So cameras are done at every site. Plus, we did an audit on the grant and we found enough money to cover about six more areas that we found as we did walks. So our principals had said, hey, this, this looks like a spot where maybe there's some trouble and we can't exactly see, so we'd like another camera there. So we're adding six more cameras in the next three weeks to sort of finish off the entirety of the project. And we have our MOU in with Fullerton PD and Sergeant Bridges and they have access as well now to, to the footage. If they need it during emergencies and all of our administrators have been trained on how to access the footage and how to pull that down. If they need to save it for investigation or whatnot. And then we've, we're working on our VoIP system, which is a voice over internet protocol system. We're getting rid of every old phone in the district and adding the new Cisco phones. That's still in process. You have to get two utilities to agree on something together. You have to get one of them to agree that they will release your business and give it to another utility. They don't always work really well together. So it's been a process this summer to try and have Spectrum and AT&amp;T working together. But we're getting there. So we're hoping by December, every single phone will be replaced. And there's some pretty neat pieces within those phones as far as being able to dial in from a cell phone, doing some all calls and things like that. Where every staff member will now have some abilities they didn't have before. So we're in good shape there on the phone system as well.
You may or may not know that last year, the California's legislature passed a new bill, Senate Bill 906. And so we have implemented this new Senate bill. One of, some of the things we've done is we have provided training to our principals and APs on the legislation and what it means in regards to the reporting requirements. And that if a child makes what's considered a homicidal threat, there'll be responsibility to report that to police and for the police to go out and do a wellness check or a gun safety check at the student's home. So all administration has been trained on that. We also have added an annual notification regarding safe gun storage to our parent handbook. So all parents will receive the parent handbook that will have that notification regarding safe gun storage in it. Additionally, we will send out a letter at the beginning of the school year. Additionally, we will send out a letter at the beginning of the school year to all parents reminding them of the importance of the, of safe gun storage. Additionally, this is a letter that was created and provided by the Attorney General. So we'll be using that format provided by the Attorney General for that letter to make sure that it's sent out to all parents. And then this information has also been added to the website and will be updated as necessary so that we can continue to communicate that information out. So staff training, we have done a lot of training this year. It's an incredible amount. All 20 of our school sites, every single school site have the Knowledge Saves Lives in-person, hands-on intruder and threat training. We also held that training here at the district office and we also held that training with our bus drivers. So we have trained all of our sites, our staff on what to do in the event of an intruder. It's a hands-on training. It's very intensive and it has done a good job in preparing our sites for, for that incident if that were ever to happen. Another thing that we've done this year is we've installed Stop the Bleed kits in each of the classrooms. One of the things that has come out of the research regarding any incidents that happen at a school regarding a shooting is the importance of stopping bleeding as quick as possible in order to preserve life. We have put Stop the Bleed kits in each of our campuses and trained staff on how to use those. We also have trained all of our playground supervisors. We trained them last year and our student safety monitors, excuse me. And we will be training them again this summer, starting tomorrow. We have a student, a school safety monitor training. And we'll also be training all of our playground supervisors before the school year starts and throughout the school year on supervision, how do they respond to threats? What sort of things can be done to ensure that our students are as safe as possible on campuses when they're not in the classrooms? When they're out on the playground, before school, after school, or different times when they're out of the classrooms? One of the other features that we have here at Fullerton that's very robust is our Emergency Operations Center. In the event of emergency, we open our Emergency Operations Center. We understand that if we had a large earthquake or a large incident, we may not have a building to go into. So additionally, we have a mobile Emergency Operations Center that's fully equipped that can be rolled out and moved to wherever we may need it at the time of emergency and would allow us to set up a mobile incident command center. Our schools as well do many drills. Monthly, there are fire and earthquake drills at each school. Quarterly, there's lockdown drills. Every year in October, we participate in the Great Shakeout. And that's done here at the district level, at our schools, and it's coordinated so that we actually open our EOC and we simulate through a tabletop activity, what would it look like if we had a particular school that may need help or that we needed to deploy resources out or needed to work with our partners such as Fullerton Police or Fullerton Fire. We continue to collaborate with Fullerton Police and Fullerton Fire to coordinate our drills and our emergency communication channels. And then we also have invited A-Skip, which is our liability insurance provider, to help out and come provide us with observation and feedback as we do these drills. So they provide us with the ability to understand how does our drill look? What are some things we could do differently? And how can we improve our, our skills? Some other things that we've done to really prepare in case of an emergency, we have a very robust supply of emergency equipment and food and tools and things that would be needed in case of an emergency. We have things in place that would allow each school independently to be able to do what they would need to do in case of an emergency. We also, each school and the district have a satellite phone. If we were to have an earthquake or another sort of natural disaster that would make cell phones inoperable and maybe our VoIP phones inoperable, we can utilize the satellite phones to be able to contact and have the schools and the district be in contact. Like we said, we have both a fixed, like I said earlier, we have both a fixed and mobile Emergency Operations Center. And one of the things that also is very helpful with our increased school fencing and the single point of entry is student, student release. Now that schools are fully fenced, we can make sure that all students get released to a parent or guardian at one single point. And that really does help increase security and ensure that we can account for all students in the event of an emergency. All right, this is another area that from last year has been a complete area of growth for us. We have installed AEDs, which are Automatic External Defibrillators, in all of our schools and the district office. So if we have a child, an adult, anyone on our campus who has an incident that involves heart, a failure of their heart, failure of a heart rhythm, we're able to use that AED and potentially save that individual's life. Additionally, we've trained staff at each site on how to use that AED. We have staff members trained in the health office and in the front office, PE coaches and other folks who would be closest to those incidents to be able to know how to respond.
That's the type of device that probably saved LeBron James' son yesterday.
Yes. And what's great about an AED, if you've never seen one, even if you're not trained or you're just, have just watched the online training, it talks you through exactly what you need to do. It is a great device. You open it up, as soon as you open it up, it will talk you through the process of how you use it. So it's, it's great that we have those in all of our schools. We also have installed overdose protection kits with Narcan in all of our schools and all of our district sites. The Narcan is available in the office for during the school day, but we also have it in our after-school programs as well so that it's accessible for the entire time that students are on campus. As mentioned earlier, we have equipped all classrooms with the Stop the Bleed and Trauma Kits in case we need that Stop the Bleed kit. And then we have new lockdown procedures and lockdown decals and posters posted in every classroom. I'm sure all of you have been to a hotel and have seen on the door, there's an escape route and it tells you what to do in case of an emergency. And it's set up so that anyone who stays in that room knows exactly what needs to happen. We've done something very similar in all of our classrooms. So in case we have a parent volunteer, we have a substitute teacher, we have somebody else, it gives very clear directions on what do you do in each situation? What do you do in case of a fire? What's the evacuation route? And, and provides real clear directions to, to anyone who may be in that classroom. School visitors and volunteers. So all of our school visitor and volunteers are required to go to the front office and check in every day before they go into, onto the campus or into a classroom. They're required to show a photo ID. The ID is searched through a program we have called Raptor, which checks criminal records and checks to see that those individuals are safe to be on campus. Once that person presents their ID, ID badge is printed. It's a stick-on badge. It has their picture on it from their ID and it tells who they are and it clearly identifies that they've checked in in the office and they've been, they're verified that they should be on campus. And so if a staff member sees an adult on campus who does not have that on or a district ID badge, staff members know immediately they need to approach that individual and ensure that individual gets to the front office and, and either gets a replacement badge because they've lost it or that they are, that they do check in and we ensure that they have checked in through the office. We also have different levels of volunteers at our school. We have levels of volunteers that may show up for one activity or one event. It's a school-wide activity. That's a fairly simple process. They check in in the office and they participate in the activity. But we do have parents and community members who want to volunteer at, at a more extended level or a more extensive level at our schools. And we have a vetting process that includes checking for TB, which is one of the things we're required to do, and also fingerprinting. So if we are sending a parent on a field trip or a parent may be working with a group of students and perhaps the teacher isn't providing constant supervision, we do fingerprint those levels of volunteers as well. Again, just to ensure that our students are safe while they're on campus. And at this time, I'd like to ask Ray Flores to come up and he's going to provide you with some more information on our school safety monitors.
Good evening. My name is Ray Flores. I'm starting my third year working with the district as a safety and wellness consultant. I'm formerly of, from, I don't want to be too loud, I tend to be loud. I'm formerly a law enforcement officer. I worked for Fullerton Police Department as my last assignment. And I've had the pleasure of working for Dr. Pletka cabinet and lots of other administrators and the board on addressing a lot of safety issues throughout the district. That's taken a lot of different faces from coordinating with the cameras, the fencing, the community, being a liaison with the police department. And I had a lot of support from Ms. Lori Bruno, who has decided to move on. And I'd like to give her a lot of credit for a lot of the work that she did for, for the district. With regard to the safety monitors, that's going to be a big continuing training issue, not issue, but challenge for us. We want to make sure that they are trained and prepared to be the eyes and ears of the district and that they're readily identifiable to the community. We have these things in place. We have these safety protocols in place and we want to make sure that the community is aware of that. And they've been provided and will continue to be provided with the, the best training that we can get them, whether it's through Knowledge Saves Lives or whomever we can get involved in that training. Additionally, we're doing training with the playground supervisors to give them permission to understand their role is not just supervising the children, but also to turn around and keep their eyes open to anything that looks unusual. And same thing we tell everybody else, see something, say something. Sometimes I think people need to be reminded that it's okay for them to act on their instincts. We are going to continue to identify anything that needs to be addressed and we look forward to working with everybody and anybody to make, make it as safe as possible for our students here at FSD. Thank you.
Couple of the components we're very excited about with our school safety monitors, we're going to start to offer what we call micro credentialing, where we will be training school safety monitors and playground supervisors in particular skills, whether that's, you know, vigilance and, and monitoring the, the perimeter of the playground, whether that's being able to use de-escalation skills, whether that's helping redirect student behavior, where student behavior may be escalating and directing students into a game or an activity. And really providing micro credentialing for those supervisors so that they can provide different alternatives to students and find ways that we can help students with their behavior in addition to increasing our school safety and well, sense of wellbeing. And at this time, I'd like to ask Sergeant Bridges to come and present on our partnership with the Fullerton Police Department.
Good evening. Lose track of time here. It's a pleasure to be, oh, got my picture up there too. I just noticed that. It's a pleasure to be with you today. So the, the purpose of having a liaison officer is to foster relationships between students and, and the police department. Officers can help with and assist with the mentoring of students, guiding students and being role models to the students. There are unfortunate times where sometimes when a young person comes in contact with a police officer for the first time, sometimes it can be a negative contact. So having a dedicated officer on a school campus or school grounds interacting with the kids fosters an environment where students can see the officers mingling with other students and staff. So therefore, it's not necessarily a negative contact when this young person first comes in contact with a police officer. I think that there's sometimes a misconception that an officer on campus is there just to get students in trouble and that is absolutely not the case. Having an officer at the schools is, it's not a new concept. Matter of fact, in 2005, when I first was selected as a school resource officer, we had officers in my unit that were dedicated and assigned to the junior high schools at the time. Unfortunately, due to staffing issues, that officer or that particular position was recalled to patrol. But now we have a great opportunity with the school district and the city to implement a liaison officer and that's available to the students, staff and the schools. As of right now, when a school, an elementary school or a junior high school has a need for an officer to respond, they are directed to call dispatch. And like all of our calls here at the Fullerton Police Department, our calls that we receive are prioritized. Now, obviously, anything that is deemed an emergency will obviously receive a high priority and an immediate response. But outside of that, the calls are prioritized. So unfortunately, we're left to dispatch officers when officers are available. Now with a liaison officer in place and that officer is dedicated to responding to the schools, the wait time for an officer to respond to a call for service at one of the sites can be drastically increased. So, and, and outside of that, say if there's no call for service or one of the school or any of the school sites don't have a need for an officer to be on campus, the liaison officer can make the rounds at the different schools and again mingle, interact with the students during their passing periods, during their lunch breaks, during before and after school, after-school events, pickups and drop-offs at school, the hockey tournament, you name it, a host and a variety of other events to where we can foster that relationship between the students, the staff and the Fullerton Police Department. Thank you very much.
Just a quick shout out. If you've ever seen kind of Sergeant Bridges at our community events and just interacting and connecting with our parents and, and with kids too, kids all come up to him and it's just been nice, it's been nice to share. He was there at the, our hockey tournament and all kinds of different things. So just a, a nice shout out to, like I said, he's been, been somebody that's not just been with us through difficult times, but has been there to celebrate with us too. So a big thank you.
At the end of last year, we had a couple of incidents at two of our schools and there was a good opportunity for us to reflect back on our crisis communication and how we communicated out to our community, to our parents, to our students. And so we always take these opportunities to reflect and look at how can we be better? What, what are we doing well and how can we be better? And a couple of the lessons learned, there were some things that we, we did very well. And one of them was we were commended by a PR specialist who was sent to us by A-Skip. Her name's Myrna Marston. And she complimented our district on how well we message, what type of messages we send and how we speak directly to concerns that happen at the school sites. Additionally, she responded that we respond to crisis well. And for example, when the crisis happens, parent meetings are held the same day. Supervisions adjusted, security was put into place when, when it was needed immediately. Things weren't, weren't left hanging for a day or for even hours. Things moved quickly and, and response was put into place. Some of the challenges that she noted were managing the communication speed and keeping everyone simultaneously updated. So there's a, with social media, with the change in the way that communication occurs in the world, folks do expect very immediate communication. So one of our greatest challenges is how do we get that communication out additionally while working on the problem and ensuring that we're securing the school and ensuring things are, are safe at the school? Again, it's to the second point, but the expectations regarding the speed of communication. Everyone is used to as soon as something happens, immediately picking up their phone and it's, and it's immediately there, right? I don't know how many of you have these, these Nextdoor type apps, but you'll hear a siren go by in your neighborhood? What's everyone do? Immediately, they're pulling it up. What's, what's the siren? What's going on? Oh, it's not on, it's not on Nextdoor. Maybe I need to go to such and such and, and people are finding it out. The other challenge is managing social media. Social media, there are many different social media outlets and social media happens quickly and what is shared on social media may or may not be And what is shared on social media may or may not be the truth as well because there's no checking, fact-checking on what's shared with social media. So, those are some of the challenges we faced. So, there were some recommendations made to us through the process and some recommendations that we came up with upon reflecting on those crises. The first was looking at our, having our LCAP committee explore the possibility of a public information officer. Somebody who could look at communicating and be in charge of communicating while the problem is being resolved. Also, looking more deeply at our level of care following a crisis event, including a sense of physical safety. We did a very good job responding and providing those interventions, but ensuring that we're doing everything we can to meet everyone's needs so that we're providing that social, emotional support. Also, inter-agency services. There's a lot of resources available in the city of Fullerton. There's a lot of resources available in our county. It's just ensuring that we have built those relationships and those collaborations and that we have folks available who can help us access and get those resources to our district, to our students, to our staff, to our parents as quickly as possible. We have a crisis communication plan, but it needs further development and revision, and we're working on that. We also know that we need a more robust tip process. There's a variety of tip-type lines out there now that don't just use a phone call or maybe an email. You can text, you can webmail, you can phone call, there's a variety of things that can happen. So we're looking at a more robust, more extensive tip reporting system. And we'll be bringing that back to the board as well. Also, not only do you not only need to have the tip system in place, but it has to be promoted. And everyone has to know about it. So, really developing a good public relations campaign so that students, our PTA, our ASB, our ELAC, our Champions for Learning, all know and are able to promote, this is how you tip. This is how you report a tip. This is how you get something to the district, outside of just contacting someone directly, which is our hopeful means that it would happen, that they would be able to contact their principal, their teacher, one of the district administrators immediately, but also having this promoted out there to provide that additional level of reporting a tip. Another area where we know that we need to provide a lot of support and that we've really increased this year is in our social, emotional supports related to school safety. When there's an incident, it has an impact on staff. Staff need to feel safe. Staff need to feel that they are able to come to work and serve the children. So when we have an incident, we have OCDE that responds with crisis teams, and we have our own district's crisis teams. Those crisis teams can provide one-on-one counseling and did in the case of the incidents we had at the end of last year. They also can provide group counseling. They can come and present at staff meetings. They also have a great series of resources that they can provide to staff. There are times that someone will go through a situation where they feel fine, they feel fine, they feel fine, and then all of a sudden, they know they need some social, emotional support. So it's making sure as well that our staff knows we have other resources. We can provide them with help through CARESOLIS, through our Employee Assistance Program, otherwise known as the EAP, through their health insurance resources. We have a variety of ways to support our staff. We also have a variety of ways to support our students. We're excited this year that we'll be launching the FOCUS program, which is a program that students who are referred to a situation that maybe involves law enforcement, or maybe they've had to have fire department dispatched to their house due to a tragedy, or there's some other incident that's involved intervention, they're provided with social, emotional support and help after that event occurs. We have our county's crisis, yes?
So, the FOCUS program was the one from the county that came out last month?
Yes, thank you. The crisis assessment team, we have a county team that will come out anytime we have a crisis at a school. And they send counselors who are specifically trained to work with students in the event of a crisis. They're fantastic. I love watching the crisis team arrive because when they do, they bring their box of items with them, a rolling box, and they always have snacks and treats and different things that they may need to help support students, but they come fully equipped and available to help students. Additionally, we have three FSD crisis teams that are able to respond out to students and sites as needed. Same thing, I love it. When they show up, they come fully equipped. So they come and they're prepared and they stay for as long as they're needed. We have a variety of mental health supports and different levels of health supports for our students through our mental health associates, our mental health counseling specialists, our school counselors, and our school psychologists. And we have those available at all of our sites for students depending on the needs that they have. And then additionally, and I'm glad to see Jackie's here tonight, we have our Community Schools grant. And through our Community Schools grant, we have three counselors and it's the ability, also have the ability to provide one-on-one counseling with parent permission to students as well. So another level, another resource that students and families can access here in Fullerton. And last but not least, we do have CARESOLIS as well. And CARESOLIS is an organization we work with that families can be referred to, and they will help families find counseling resources. They do a great job in identifying the counselor based on the type of need, where the family lives, and what works within their ability, whether they have health insurance or don't have health insurance, they provide support. And one last plug for Jeremy, we will be having an online safety board study session. And that will be held on August 29th at 5:00 PM. That's not the night of a normally scheduled board meeting, but it's a special study session. So, we're looking forward to Jeremy to be able to come and give us a bunch of great information. All right. Little longer than I would have wanted, but a lot of information. So, any questions?
Thank you. You and your team and the breadth and depth of your efforts. And I know they're ongoing, but this was incredibly heartwarming to see, and I'm sure that our community feels the same way, what's going forward. And we appreciate that everything that's gone on before has not been lost in significance to all those who have tried to work to make the situations better.
Thank you.
Could we kind of go slide by slide and see if we have any questions on each section? Does that make sense?
Sure, let's do that.
Okay.
Chad, can you take us back to the first slide?
I was curious, I know that we've, I've seen the evidence, that our campuses are now secure, single point of entry. Is every single school open on the weekends? No? Okay. Some of them are.
Some of them are, correct.
Yeah, okay, okay. That's been my experience, I wanted to double-check that. Okay. But some are and some are not.
Correct.
Is it poss, I mean, can folks go on our website to find out which schools are available for play?
I think the communities know, we don't have that on the website. But they know which ones are open and which ones are closed.
Why are some open and some are not?
A lot of that comes from just the community and the school. And what happens is a lot of times over the weekends, people come onto the campuses and things happen. And so then when we come to school on Monday morning, we find a lot of problems that we have to fix. So it's for that reason. They've historically been sealed up.
So, more accurate to say, some campuses are open and available to the community and others are not.
Correct, yes. Yes, some are, some are. The schools where we recently put up fencing that were open, those schools are, they're open.
The new people that we are hiring to watch the schools on weekends, they will help with the situations that could occur?
So, currently, we have security at night, seven days a week, from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. We actually don't at the time have it for the weekend.
I thought we were hiring three staff people?
That's something that we're looking at.
Oh, okay.
We're looking at that. And that could help, that could assist with that, correct?
Thank you.
Rob, I think a little more clarification. I think on any of the things where we share joint use with the parks, with the city, that those are open specifically?
Correct, yes.
So, and then if there's parks that are adjacent that, in those cases, people have access to those parks, and then there are, there is joint fields that have both city and our school district, those are open?
Correct.
Okay. And is there another criteria? I was trying, I was trying to.
No, if it's a park.
I think the criteria is based on whether it's joint use and whether it was intended to be open to the public, like historically, whether that was soccer fields, baseball fields, those sorts of things.
Correct. And we do have, even some schools that are closed up over the weekends, we do have youth sports that use them, and they are on there. If it is a park or adjacent to the park, that is available. We don't, we don't close those off.
Jeremy, can you refresh our recollection now that the cameras are online? We have access to the footage. We're sharing that access with the Fullerton Police Department.
Yes.
Can you remind us, or remind me, I guess, how that system is sort of envisioned to work in the future?
Oh, sure. So, the company is called Vigilon that we purchased through. They have the most robust system that we liked. So basically, we have cloud access. So, we have usernames and passwords we give into the police department that they can use in case of emergency, if they need to, you know, if there was, you know, some kind of situation where they needed to see what was happening on campus, they'd have full access to those cameras. Everything we've done has been outside of the building, so it's all the exterior of the building. We don't have cameras inside hallways and things like that. But it's every school sort of surrounding the school, ingress, egress, and areas that potentially had a lot of vandalism in the past or had break-ins, things like that. So, what happens is if someone wants footage, the principals know how to look and see. So, like, we've had break-ins over a weekend, so we immediately go on. Scott knows how to get onto it, you know, jumps on, looks, and we can sort of see, okay, here's where it is. We can talk to the police department, say, here's what we found. If we need it for an actual investigation, usually someone from the police department, Sergeant Bridges, comes in, and we look at footage together so he can basically take custody of the footage. Also, so there's, so you don't have a chain of custody issue as well, you know what? This person taking it, this person editing it, this person handing it off. No, no, we want it pure, raw, whole video to be able to hand off to be used for evidence. If it's more of an evidentiary piece, if it's more someone was misbehaving, which is not the point of the cameras is to catch behavior problems, but if there is something that needs to be done, it can be seen as well. So, it's site administrators and then some people in my department and then the police department and Scott's department as well.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm curious, I know some parents have been concerned about blinds and the security of the ability to shut, close windows so that people can't see in to children. Is that something that we've installed at all schools or just those that are kind of outward-facing? How does that, what has been the policy on that?
So, blinds are one of those double-edged swords because the other thing we want to do is make sure that there's clear sight into classrooms.
For protection.
Yes, for protection as well. And so, it's one of those issues where we have campuses where we do have street-facing or outward-facing sign, or windows, we have installed blinds, but what we do ask is that those blinds only get closed in the event of an emergency. For the most part, that we do try to keep those open throughout the school day because there are concerns on the other end of things as well. So it's that balancing act with the blinds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this slide? Dr. Hammond?
I just want to acknowledge and show my gratitude for the efforts to make sure this message is really clearly communicated to our families and our community about safe gun storage. I know that a lot of the groups that are working to address gun safety throughout the community, throughout the country, have identified that this is one of the most effective ways to prevent school shootings, is to make sure that our families and our communities are keeping guns away from folks that shouldn't have them and especially children. So, I'm really grateful for that and just want to acknowledge how important that piece is, and we all play a part in that in the community and making sure guns are safely stored.
Thank you. Is the notification in the parent handbook going to be something that people can voluntarily sign and agree to if they do have firearms, or is it just?
It's information, yeah. We just push out. Correct, okay. And they do sign that they've received it, so at least there is a sign, a receipt.
Legally, they're accountable for that.
Whether they read it or not is going to be on them.
Correct. And we will be sending home another notice besides what's in the parent handbook, so there will be two opportunities. One's in the parent handbook and one's in a separate letter that we'll be sending.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this slide? Hopefully, the first two slides deal with this slide. Any questions or comments on this slide from the board?
Yeah, I had a question. On the amount of hours that supervisors and student safety monitors will be receiving throughout the year. So I know Ray mentioned that this will be ongoing, but do we know about how many hours during a school year they'll be receiving?
The initial training, Ray, is 30 hours, correct?
Yes.
The initial training's 30 hours, and then we'll be offering, they have regular meetings and trainings monthly, which are generally two to three hours each month for the school safety monitors. Then for the playground supervisors, they'll be provided with a three-hour training before the school year starts, and then we're looking at offering for them at least two additional trainings at a district level, which will be two hours apiece.
And then one other thing that we were implementing for this year is actually pushing out into the sites and giving feedback to each one of the sites in terms of safety monitors as well as pupil supervisors. Because we all know, a training in one context doesn't always transfer to another context. And so in this case, even though they get the training, to have someone like Ray go out there and then work with the staff and to kind of, in some cases, gently remind, you know, the person about the training that they've received, to help them, answer questions, and then also make it specific. So, this year, in addition to the monthly meetings and in addition to the initial start, Ray is one of the people that will be out to every single site, but also PBIS, so Amy is also going to be pushed out to help with, I mean, how, we sometimes assume that people that we hire maybe come in with a set of skills of how to deal with kids and how do you deal with two kids, not necessarily like fighting and throwing each other to the wall, but when they scream at each other, when they may use a foul, a little foul language or, and so, training our supervisors, like, how do you respond to that? So we want to do a better job in providing that ongoing training throughout the year. I would imagine, in addition to the initial trainings, that each site will receive probably another 10 hours of training from the combination of people.
I was going to say, I'm real happy about that because I remember being a playground supervisor and being just given, you know, here's your little spot, this is where you go, and no training at all, right? So we know that that's not always great. And intervention or crisis intervention training for students that are, you know, having conflicts on campus, out in the playground, how do you deal with conflict management? Being able to have them talk through what happened and try and figure it out as opposed to intervening. So I think that those are all great things for our playground supervisors so that they feel support and they feel equipped to be able to do that. Are we offering any of the training for our, especially our playground supervisors in areas that may need interpretation in different languages? So are we training any of our playground supervisors in different languages?
Yes, we'll actually have the training. We'll bring out our district translators and we'll have the audio translation so they can hear as well. And we did that this past summer.
Good question.
Any other questions or comments from the board on this slide?
One more, sorry. So that seemed pretty robust. Is there like some type of guide curriculum that, the topics of the trainings that go on, or is this kind of just whatever comes up and whatever's kind of needed for each of the school sites?
We have a, we have a training template that we developed that we used last summer, and we will continue to use that template and add on to it. It really goes through physical safety and how do you provide physical safety, intervention... It really goes through physical safety, and how do you provide physical safety, intervention, and how do you deal with, with student conflicts? It moves to providing social, emotional support to students, and then some of the softer skills of, what do you do when a student, all of a sudden, isn't acting like themselves? And some of our first folks to notice that are our playground supervisors. They're the, they're the front line. They see the students in the morning, first thing when they walk in the gate. And making sure our student supervisors are equipped to see, when Bev usually comes bouncy through the gate, she's very happy and smiley, and suddenly she comes in, and it's, it's not a good day. What, they have, they have the ability to report and help and provide some intervention, so that we can support our students.
Not to make the presentation even longer, but a, a little shout-out. We had a, Sabrina is her name, and she works at Nicholas, and she's one of the safety monitors. And I literally saw her see one of the, the girls who was down, and she just walked right over, and, and Sabrina asked how she was doing, and literally the, the girl started to cry, and Sabrina brought her to the counselor. So, that's, that's the sort of response we want to see, and we want to provide the, the training so that more people can do that.
If there's no other questions or comments on this slide, we can move to the next one. All right, any questions or comments from the board on this slide?
So, my question with this was with the quarterly lockdown drills. To what degree we're imitating an active shooter, sort of situation? How much do we involve our kids? Because I know there's a lot of evidence now that it's causing a lot of stress and anxiety for our children, so I wondered about our approach to that.
We, we don't incorporate any, any sort of idea of an active intruder or active shooter. We have a lockdown drills for a variety of reasons on campuses. There may be something outside the campus that may be happening. There may be a dog on the campus. There's been a variety of reasons that we have to do a lockdown. So, we do just treat it like a lockdown drill, which is make sure the door's locked, and everyone needs to stay in the classroom, and please don't exit the classroom until you're given the all-clear.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Um, just did some work around this seven, eight years ago, maybe, at Woodcrest. Getting the community prepared for a natural disaster, knowing that there's a soft three-story building with about two-hundred-and-seventy units right next to it. Do we have a plan to utilize our school sites as like a gathering space for the community to utilize? Because I, so I know, like, we're preparing our students and our staff, but us being a public entity, how do we prepare for probably an influx of people that need to find relief? Typically, when you see huge natural disasters that happen, you know, across the country, of being a hub to, to a relief, like, zone or area?
Chuck can comment, but I had an experience. I was the superintendent in El Centro, and there was a major, major earthquake that actually closed one school district down, several sites. El Centro, we were actually closed for two weeks, and people were, had to leave their housing. And we did have a, a couple of gymnasiums. Red Cross contacted us, asked us if they could use it. Of course, we first have to have engineers to make sure that the place we were hosting was also safe. After that, they came. So, my, just based on my experience, usually on those sorts of emergencies, you get contacted by, let's say, Red Cross, and at that point, again, they have to still ensure that the building that we're using is safe and all of those things, but then at that point, we would open it. I mean, those sorts of, like, again, major earthquakes, thank God we don't have hurricanes. I guess we have twisters now, but, you know.
Train.
Train, yeah, train.
Any other questions or comments on this slide? All right, Dr. Hammett, the next slide.
So, my question for this is, you said that we have enough food and water for all of our students and staff. For how long? And then, if that's the case, does PTA need to still create kits for every single kid, every single year?
Well, we do have enough, we do have enough for three days on campus. Now, it, it would sustain somebody. However, the kits are, are much more student-friendly and can be more comforting. What, what we have would, would get folks by in, in a time of need. So, the, yes, those kits do make a big difference.
So, we, so you think we should keep doing the kits?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the short answer is yes.
Yes.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, so, again, about seven years ago, did a lot of work with the Woodcrest, Woodcrest Elementary specifically, but the neighboring residents as well, too, so, yeah, trust me. It is a lot of work, yeah.
A lot of, some companies sell those type of kits, and schools can use them for fundraisers for families, and put them in their car in case they're worried something will happen, and they want immediate access. And that's another way to go. That's more expensive for PTAs, but probably less hours required.
Dr. Hammett, the Mobile Emergency Operations Center, I grew up in the eighties. Is it by any chance a tricked-out black van that could go around from site to site?
I wish I could say it was that fancy. How about a tricked-out version of the old magic school bus? It's a, it's a retired bus that we use, but it's great, because we've been able to remove all the seats, and it allows us to store what we need for the Emergency Operations Center and utilize it.
I mean, it doesn't sound as cool, but it sounds pretty good.
I wish it was, I wish it was more like a transformer, and it would all fold out, and-
We could spray, spray it black.
Spray it black, there you go.
For the President of the Board.
Any other questions or comments on this slide? Dr. Hammett, the next slide, please. The, the Narcan is part of a, is a recent state law as well, right?
It is, and I, I'm very grateful for the team that works with me, the nurses, Julie Brandon, Lori Bruno, for having the foresight to apply for, and we were one of the first elementary districts to apply for Narcan, and actually have Narcan in place before it was ever even in the state law. So, really good forward-thinking on behalf of the team.
And it's an important drug.
Yes.
It's conceivable that somebody from the neighboring community could actually come to one of our campuses and possibly need it, right?
And that's why we've made sure that we have it available as well in our after-school programs, realizing that we could have someone in the community who's impacted.
What about EpiPens?
EpiPens are more difficult, being that they do require prescriptions.
Prescription?
So, we don't, don't keep those on stock unless somebody has an actual prescription for them.
But the family supplies it?
Yes.
That's, they're very expensive.
Any other questions or comments on this slide from the board? Raptor System is federal or state?
Raptor System is actually a private system we use. It's a, a company that we, we partner with, that we contract with, but it does check both federal and state background records.
And also can check IDs from outside of the United States as well, right?
Correct.
So, someone doesn't have to be a US citizen in order to volunteer with us and be screened?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions or comments on this slide?
This was really helpful to learn more. This was something that was somewhat new to me. Are there school safety monitors at every single campus now?
They are at all of our junior high schools.
Okay.
But we don't have them at the elementary, but they are at our junior highs.
Two at each of the, at each junior high.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I really like the credential, the micro cond- micro cond- cond- credentialing.
Credentialing.
Credentialing. I think that's not only important to teach people, but I think when people hold a credential, they hold their responsibilities even higher to themselves. And I am really glad to see we do that. When we, when we give out ID, not ID cards, the business cards to all of our staff, when they have these things that they do, like, security training, or being a member of the, of the safety team, or having a micro credential, do we put that on their cards so that they get recognition for what they're doing?
Yes, we'll, we'll be adding it to that, but we'll also be looking at some sort of a badging system, and we're, we're still working on that, but so that our playground supervisors, for example, could have a, an apron, or perhaps a hat that they wore that included the credentials or the badging for the type of credentialing they hold.
Oh, I'm really glad, because I think badging is not only nice for the people who see it, but important for the people who've earned it.
Yes.
Just going back, though, was that, so six total, because it's two monitors that are junior highs only?
Correct.
Or not kindergarten?
Right.
There's, and there's specifically one at Pacific Drive, and I know that was really important to the community, and so that's something that they're partially funding locally.
Like, through their PTA?
The, the school site?
No, no, through the school site.
The school sites funded, that?
Yeah.
Yes.
And the district is assisting.
What, what, what happens at Fissler and Beachwood are K eights for, for that? Who picks that up? The counselors?
The, well, we utilize our, our administrative teams at those spots as well. We have a ability to move some of our school safety monitor around if needed. We have a, a lead school safety monitor who can help in a situation if we needed safety monitor assistance at either of the two K eights. He'd be available to help as well, as needed.
And whenever there are issues at, at those schools that need a little bit of extra support, I, I also am kind of floating around, and I, I flex different sites, offer whatever help I can, and identify the problem, discipline suggestions, law enforcement. I'll, I'll contact Sergeant Bridges and ask for help.
And, and I'll contact Sergeant Bridges and ask him if, if he can send somebody out, or if it's, calls for some other support, we'll put that in place.
But the, the daily intervention, you know, the finding that one student on the playground that's acting a little bit different, we leave up to administration or somebody else to, to notice?
I think, a couple of things. I mean, for sure, they have the counselors, and their counselors are very active and present and visible, so that's the, one of the groups. And both schools do have full-time counselors. In addition, the safety monitors, that's one of the things why we want to do more training, because every school has the pupil, I'm sorry, the pupil supervisors, so doing the training with the pupil supervisors. And, and there's definitely, you know, every crisis provides, I'll say, some gifts. And so, one of the gifts in the crisis is that we need to do a better job with our training, our pupil supervisors, and ongoing training, and, and so, and that's a resource that every school has. And so, I anticipate us doing a better job in that area.
Any other questions or comments on this slide from the board? It's a good photo there, Sergeant Bridges. You know, I actually remember the name of our officer that would spend time at Orange River. It was Officer JD, John DiCaprio, I believe.
Right.
And so, it's something that I, I grew up with here in the district. And, you know, I, I do think it's important for students to feel that there's somebody and some authority that's there to protect them, not, and for our staff to feel that way as well. So, just, you know, somebody that, that came up, and, and this is not anything new, I guess, if, if it happened with me thirty years ago, but I'm, I'm happy to, to, to keep it going as well while I'm on the board, so, thank you. Any other questions or comments on our program? All right, yeah, crisis communication. So, I think this is kind of what prompted this presentation. And it's amazing how we have this well-thought-out system. Each slide is connected with sort of the idea before and after it, but, you know, one individual can wreak havoc, whether it's online or actually on campus. And it's, it's so hard to imagine all the ways that somebody could menace us as a district, but, you know, it seems to me like we're trying. And the hardest part now is letting our community know how hard we're trying. And so, you know, I just hope this next school year is like an opportunity for everyone to sort of learn with our new safety procedures, and, you know, that nobody out there wants to really push our buttons. But, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm very appreciative of all of the effort that's being taken so far. Any other comments or questions?
I like the suggestion of a public information officer. I think that that's an effective way to quickly communicate with our parents, and rest assured that we have the information to get to them quickly.
Yeah, I also agree. I would love to see us have a public information officer. I think many districts have them already. My question was why the LCAP committee would be the ones exploring that? It, that was the recommendation. Is that because it would have to be, the funding would come through each individual schools?
Or just finding a funding source?
Finding a funding source.
And using the, the LCAP as a potential funding source for that.
Okay, okay.
And, and just as a reminder, you are the board. You can make decisions outside the LCAP committee, but from a process perspective, staff recommending, we usually kind of default to the, the processes we use. LCAP is kind of a typical process. It's funded by, it would be funded by the district. You would identify that through the LCAP process. But again, you're the board.
I mean, we just finished it, though, right? So, we don't have another-
But we could find resources if it's priority. I think it's an important thing.
I do, I mean, we have another year until we do the LCAP process again, right?
So, Dr. Black, what would the process look like, seeing as how the board is all assembled here?
Like this. I move that we look into getting a public office, a public relation, a public information officer. Do I have a second?
I, I will say that.
So, why don't we do this? Why don't we agendize it here in the next couple of months to, to, for further discussion?
I think it, it helps free our leaders up in times of crisis to focus on solving the issues, and, and then hopefully they can focus on really positive, wonderful things our district is doing in times when they're not in crisis, right? And I think that piece about social media is so critical. We saw that very clearly this last year, how social media can even replicate crisis, can create crisis, but it can also be a really important tool for managing it. So, we need to both be aware of what's happening and the misinformation that's out there, as well as getting solid information out as quickly as possible through all the appropriate channels, and that's what a public information officer can do.
So, would that agenda item, Dr. Black, be how we move forward on that? Or are we still trying to maybe discuss whether the board is interested in that? Because I think there might be-
We can't vote on it tonight.
Sure, right.
We probably should talk about it tonight.
So, one, you have multiple, again, you're the board. You have multiple ways you could do this. So, one is you-
It's already listed.
You could, you could actually create an action item at, at a future board meeting, so either the next one or the, the one after that. You could do a discussion first to see if there's interest, and then follow it up with the second meeting. So, and, you know, I guess the question for you would be, do you want to have an action item potentially at the next board meet, whatever, we'll say the next two board, within the next two board meetings? We need to pull together some information, what's the costs, you know, all those sorts of things. And then we could bring that as a discussion item, and then if there was consensus by the board, we just bring it back at the following, theoretically, we could have an action item. I mean, we could have it as soon as, let's say, September, but you could do a September, and then bring it back in October. It's up to you.
Does anybody want to maybe amend the recent motion to have the agenda item be an action item? Or move it to an earlier meeting as a discussion item, so that, that from that point on, it can be an action item?
I would start with you, because you seconded it.
Okay, well, I want to ask, does anyone have any concerns right now or hesitation of pursuing this? Is that okay for us to talk about right now?
Well, it's listed on our presentation.
I think you can talk, you can for sure talk about process, and I think for sure you can talk about bringing it back. I would probably refrain from right now, like, taking a straw poll on whether you're voting for it, but I think you can definitely say, hey, if this is an interest, let's bring it back. And do you want to bring it back as an action or a discussion? Definitely, okay.
I would like to, I would like to see it come back as a discussion item, and I would like to see information on how much it would cost us.
Yep.
And I would like to see it maybe at different levels, maybe part-time- Maybe part-time, quarter-time, if a contract out, just see options.
Yeah, great.
At which meeting?
Whenever you, whenever you find it feasible to fit in.
Yeah, I, I think if we could do it in the September, it's going to take a little bit of time just to pull together some information. We'd probably ask Paul from Personnel to ask us, to ask to find out, you know, what, what costs, what is an average salary, those sorts of things. And it'll, it'll take two or three weeks. And so the September board meeting, we could definitely have it ready to go.
I'm sure I can pull some information out of my archives now. I think we've done that before, so yeah.
Sounds good, okay. Any other questions or comments on this slide or direction from the board?
Yes, so on the challenges that were suggested, I know we have a good relationship with Fullerton PD. And I think they do an amazing job of letting the community know when there is either, you know, street closures, things like that. I think maybe asking them what they do on how quickly they respond, both on social media, because I know they're pretty active on social media. So maybe asking, you know, PD and what their communications channels are and what their process is. Because I know like if there's, you know, stay away from certain, you know, streets, I know, I think this.
They have a public information officer.
Yeah. But, so I know that was one of the.
Can I say full-time Sergeant Bridges?
Yeah, so, I mean, just asking them, how quick do they post and, and how they get that information out? Making, making sure that they have all the right information before they, they share and not causing any questions from the community. So I think, I think that would be just something that I would, I just wrote down, was seeing what PD does, yeah.
I know Irvine School District also has a public information officer.
Several of them.
So for us, we have a full-time, uh, public information officer. As far as getting the information out, again, we are very cautious about putting information out too quickly because we want to make sure that it's vetted. So if there is something, a major ordeal or an emergency situation, our public information officer might put out a message. We are getting reports of this, however, it's not been confirmed. Stay tuned for further information. That way it lets the public know that, hey, yes, we are aware of it. We're looking into it. And then that we will update you later when we get more factual information. So that's one of the things about being a public information officer is you, you, you want to put out information, but you don't want to put out information too quickly. Because once you put it out there, you can't bring it back, unfortunately. So that's, that's how they, they will normally operate.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this time on this slide?
I just want to acknowledge how important that anonymous tip process is, especially since our students text instead of call. And I know we had a consultation with our junior high students. They told us, well, we don't know where the bullying, report bullying button is and that we put it right on their tablets on the homepage. And that made, I think, a difference for some kids. And so expanding that beyond bullying, but any kind of tip, whether that's a safety issue, a concern about self-harm, I think it's important that our students and our families and community know they can report anything and that it will be treated with, with care, responsive and anonymity and respect, yeah.
Great, thank you. Uh, next slide? Any questions or comments on our social emotional supports in school safety?
It's nice to see how many other county and community providers help us out. That makes a lack of duplication of services and more effective for the group that specifically focuses in on one type of thing.
I also, I would say, I appreciate that our social emotional support is listed here as part of our safety approach in that it is preventative also, right? We need to think about caring for our children and our families' mental health as part of the way we prevent violence and crisis. And so, you know, again, gun safety experts find that's the most, one of the most effective interventions we can do to prevent school shootings and other forms of violence. So I appreciate that it's, we're putting it in this process that it's preventative. And I am excited and hoping we continue to increase so our ratios are closer to the 250 to one ratios that are recommended for, for counselors versus students.
Yeah, this is, this is good progress. Any other questions or comments on this slide? If not, then I think we, any other questions or comments will have to be held until August 29th for our board study session. Thank you, everyone, for this really informative presentation. At this time, we're going to move to, um, reports. Dr. Fleck?
I'm, today, I'll just say we have had staff, we have had staff working all summer. And so sometimes I want to make sure I acknowledge all those folks that have been here all summer. I see a couple in the corner there that have been here, so thank you. Business department, payroll and Personnel, been hiring all summer. But I also want to welcome back some of those that took a little bit of a vacation. So welcome back, everybody, and looking forward to a good year.
From the Board of Trustees, Trustee Barryman, would you like to begin this evening?
Actually, no, but I will. Just welcome back to everybody. It seems like we are just here, but summer has really gone by. I thank all of our staff and everyone for all the hard work during the summer because I think people think that everyone has time off and it's, oh, welcome back. Well, you really probably never left. So thank you for everything that you guys have done. I hope that those that did take a couple of weeks off took some time for themselves, relaxed and rejuvenated so that they're ready to come back and appreciate that. All of our students are getting excited buying all their school supplies, having their parents pull their hair out or grow beards and goatees and mustaches, whatever it takes to, to have the summer go by. So thank you.
Trustee Talavera?
So I wasn't here the last, last meeting, so it feels like I've been gone all summer and, and I know school's about to start. So I'm definitely one that's probably been growing out a beard and, and a mustache here. Waiting for my kids to go back to school so I can have time to shave maybe, I don't know. Definitely want to give a shout out to Scott and his team. I know they've been really busy with projects over the summer. I think that's when they ramp up. Definitely been seeing things on our agenda, you know, approving, you know, some, some purchase orders and things like that. So shout out to your team for doing all the hard work over the summer, getting a lot of our school sites. I know I've been seeing some posts, Anthony, your school getting geared up over there with some new murals. Golden Hill, I know, has been doing some, some work over there. So I know most of our other school sites are probably doing something similar. Again, getting ready for our kids to come back and walking them, walking, welcoming them back, you know, with the, you know, new, fresh look. So principals as well too, thank you guys for getting all geared up for that. Yeah, just looking forward to school starting again. Again, you'll see our consent items in the, as trustee Tocor mentioned, in the triple letters. So I, I know we're gearing up for, for a lot of amazing things that are happening and, you know, renewing some contracts and things like that for some amazing programs and, and things that, that our schools, our kids are going to benefit from. But yeah.
You know, trustee Talavera, in the, in the eighties, if somebody had an evil twin brother, they always had a goatee. That was like, in Knight Rider, for sure, that happened. Trustee Henshaw?
Oh, okay. I don't know if I'm ready for school. I need to see four weeks of summer, but I am looking forward to this year. It's going to be a great one. I promised last time at our board meeting that I would update you on the community walk that I had a chance to be a part of. On June 21st, the City Commissioner for Active Transportation Committee invited, and with Councilman Zara, invited me to join as we looked at a community walk around the Maple School area in Valencia and Lemon. So I got to go and I invited to come along some, some of our school leaders. So Principal Varela from Nicholas and two of the office leaders from Maple, Sandra Seibert and Karina Tovar, joined us and along with some parents. And it was a really helpful, insightful input that they brought on the ways that families and kids use that, the walk, the space, you know? Walking to and from school. You can imagine Valencia and Lemon is a very busy intersection. And that's where a lot of kids and families are coming, drop off and pick up and after school. And, and, you know, we went over sidewalks that are very much broken and difficult for, you know, people with assist, walking assistance to get through on wheels and things like that, strollers. So there's some challenges with what the city's responsible for, ensuring the safety and the well-being of our, especially pedestrians as well as drivers. But then we also looked at the role that the school can play and what we can do to keep our kids especially safe. One of the concerns that I have and that our, our staff brought up was just the fencing. Because while we do have fencing that includes the parameters of Maple School, kindergartners play right behind a really busy intersection of Lemon and Valencia. So I've talked with Scott and we've talked with Rob and they were looking at our plans for that corner, looking at the bollards and the, you know, distance and weight and how fast a car would be moving if they ran into that fence. So we're, I connected them with our city engineer and they're continuing to follow up on that conversation. And, you know, part of what sparked that, it was also just safety for kids from other forces in the community too. And you'll recall that a couple of months ago, we had students that were part of OC United's after-school program. They were telling us on more the west end of town how they were experiencing great gang recruitment and felt unsafe walking to and from school. So I've already told Councilman Zara that I'm hoping we can extend these community walks to that side of town next and invite community members as well as staff to look at possible partnerships between the community, the schools and, and, you know, neighbors to look at ways we can be more helpful for kids that are walking to and from school and after-school programs, which seem to be more of the concerns. Is that kind of more four to six hours when, when kids don't feel always safe walking to and from school and home? But, you know, I just want to say to my board, I, I've been definitely hearing from a lot of different sources that gang recruitment has increased in Fullerton too. So I want us to be thoughtful of that as we think about our kids and their well-being and their safety this year. You know, I, Father Greg Boyle is one of my personal heroes. He worked with Homeboy Industries and he, he says, you know, there's a notion that kids join gangs because they're drawn to them, but they aren't drawn, they're fleeing. And we want to be a safe place for kids, where they come to us and our schools are a place of refuge, of dignity, of safety. And so I think I want to, I want us to keep that at a forefront of our minds this year as we think about safety and security and care for our kids and our community.
Thank you very much. Trustee Sugarman?
Welcome back, everybody. I, I feel recharged and reinvigorated. I'm a little concerned about my staff though, because here we are, recharged and reinvigorated, and they're still in the back of the room. I don't know. But anyway, we're glad to see your smiling faces and that you're here tonight, like everyone else. I know that M&amp;O has no downtime and has been busy all summer. I'm sure Purchasing has also been busy all summer. We see so much in our agenda tonight. I'm sure that our staff, our students, our community is going to be so excited when they walk in the schools and they see those polished floors and the clean windows and fresh books out there and just clean bulletin boards. Just, it's all really nice. And they're going to appreciate Josh for pulling through all that wire to create faster internet for all of our students and our staff. We really appreciate the upgrade. It sounds like it comes with switches. I have no idea that, what that is, but thank you and thank Purchasing for getting them. We appreciate it. You were talking before, Leonel, about how schools are looking painted and nice. At Maple, here's one of the designs. They've become an environmental school, which is our first environmental school. And their principal had the idea that their buildings should be named and reflect what they're all after. May I call on you to tell us about this one? I have three slides here for you to talk about for a second because you're so proud of your school. I just love it.
Thank you, Hilda. This one is our deciduous forest ecosystem. So this whole building is the deciduous forest. It's actually an Alaska scene. So if you look in the water, you'll see like really detailed salmon, grizzly bears around it, et cetera. And you see the artist, he's just finishing it up. This one was just finished this week.
Thank you. Want to go to the next one?
Just can I add in, is there an important anniversary this year for Maple?
This is our 100th anniversary. So this is in celebration of our 100th anniversary for our community. You see our ocean building right there. It's our main building from the inside. If you are able to like expand it, you'll see like a big sea turtle and humpback whales on the right, some bottlenose dolphins in the middle. And by the way, all of these will be coming to life too with augmented reality. Using our iPads, you know, it's going to create content where they're going to use the Halo app to be on there. And then that sea turtle will come to life and tell you about the ocean ecosystem, what you can do to protect it, et cetera.
Great, and the last one?
Trustee Sugarman, there are only two pictures.
Only two came through? Okay. You'll have to go over to Maple and see what's going on. It's exciting because when I first heard this concept from Anthony, he said, well, I said, how are you going to afford this? He said, well, it'll probably be a 10-year project, maybe a seven-year project. And this is year two or three. And he's able to already put out this. So when his students walk on campus and anybody else, they know that this school has a special vision and it will be reflected on the work in their classrooms. And I think that I love that our schools take that type of initiative to put out programs and then exploit, show them to everybody with pride, and that's wonderful. Our summer programs were a great success and hundreds of students participated. These enrichment programs covered so many areas and will help so many of our students across the city when they return with a wonderful summer experience, coming to school and really enjoying what they're doing. And that will make them come back this fall with a greater love for learning and what they'll hopefully be doing in the fall as we focus on really getting in there and making sure our children are learning language, reading, mathematics, so that they will be able to be as potentially great in the success of their future. I want to thank all the principals for their welcome back letters and updated websites. So many of them have them. And in the next couple of weeks, I am sure that many of our families are going to be looking at those websites to get information about coming back to school, times, classes, teachers, everything. And these extra little things on the websites make the start of the school year flow so much better. So thank all of you who've updated your websites or your Instagram or your Facebook or whichever way you feel that your community most commonly checks out what's going at your school.
You mean, Hilda, you visit every single school's website?
I do. Just so you know. But that's an issue to talk about tomorrow at our, at our meetings or the next day. Our district's model is great schools, successful students. And as I look at our summer programs, our technology advances. Our focus is this summer for children in so many areas. Our welcoming atmosphere for students wherever they come from and whenever they pop in during the school year. I know that Fullerton School District should be proud because great schools are creating successful kids. And I want to thank all of our leadership for making that happen. Thank you.
That's great, thank you. I think our district is the heart and soul of this community, so thank you, everyone. Anna, do we have any reports from D-Lux?
President Tocor, we do not have a report from D-Lux.
Do we have any reports from PTA this evening?
Not, not from PTA or FIDA, but we do have a report from CSEA.
All right. Would our CSEA representative please join us at the podium?
While you're walking up there, I did forget to do one thing. I want to thank Anna for our. I want to thank Anna for our information booklet. I mean, it's fabulous and I want to thank you. Hard work.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Plaka, President of the Corps, and members of the Board, Cabinet and Community. It's really nice to see you again. I'm Brooke Webb and I will be speaking on behalf of CSEA tonight. Just when I think I'm beginning to understand the passage of time, every summer seems to somehow get longer and shorter than the last. This summer, classified employees supported the summer programs across 13 sites in our district in lots of meaningful ways. They staffed offices, helped as aides, supported technology, kept the grounds looking nice, the rooms clean, and our students happy and fed. Thank you to all who continued to work over the summer. It is you all that keep so many wheels in motion and things running so smoothly. This weekend, two of our members headed to Reno, Nevada to participate in the CSEA 97th Annual Conference, which will run until July 28th. Sherry Williamson and Marlene Acosta have the privilege of representing our chapter, which is Chapter 130, as they vote on different resolutions, celebrate accomplishments and help set the course of our association. They will hear from candidates for state office, the State of the Union, the Executive Director's Report and the budget reading. They have the opportunity to meet with CSEA's approved benefit providers, the retiree unit, the executive board and the standing committees, the standing committees for our benefit providers in the area. They brought back lots last year, great insight with them, and we expect this year to be the same. Right after that, they will also be representing us in the first ever CSEA Annual Women's Conference, which is held the July 28th and 29th. They will join our, the 150 CSEA members selected to engage in presentations, trainings and conversations about topics that impact women. They will have the opportunity to hear from keynote speakers and presenters who will share their challenges and successes in their areas of expertise. Presentation topics include women empowerment, financial success, resume and interview skills, self-defense work life, union balance, emotional intelligence and social media safety. We cannot wait to hear all about this new event and help empower everyone here in our district with what they bring back. Office staff will be returning this week to begin planning and preparing for orientations. Offices to reopen in the first week of school. Technology, library and media assistants will return this week as well to help prepare the libraries and iPads and technology alongside our techs to make sure we have a smooth and successful rollout of devices. Health assistants, community and student success liaisons, interpreters and many more will join us this week to help prep as well. I feel like I'm going to finish this letter to you all and blink and we will be at the beginning of the school year. So I hope everyone finds time to have calm moments before the momentum of the new school year catches us all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. FESMA.
President of the Corps, Board, Dr. Bob Plaka, Cabinet. My name is Mike McAdam. I'm the President of FESMA and also Director of Purchasing, Contracts, Warehouse and Print Shop for the great district, Fullerton School District. Classified certificate managers, we are ready and prepared to see the smiling faces of students coming very soon. We've had a great year in closing, working very closely with all departments and again, moving forward in the positive direction and getting prepared for next school year. One of our own is moving to greater challenges and opportunities. More than 11 years in the Fullerton School District, Lori Bruno, our Risk Director and person responsible for all things safety has accepted a position with A-Skip. During the time in FSD, Lori has led us through difficult times and crises with her knowledge and expertise. Because of Lori's work, Fullerton has one of the lowest worker comp rates in Orange County. Lori's work with, during COVID, with creative signage and contact tracing was a main reason we were able to keep our schools and offices open during the pandemic. Lori built an outstanding emergency disaster preparedness program from the ground up and she worked very closely with the city to ensure traffic around our schools was safe. She's responsible for bringing the knowledge saves lives to FSD and now over 1,500 staff members are trained to deal with the unthinkable. Her latest campaign, Who Is in Your Crosswalk, is a testament to her ability to work collaboratively with outside agencies and local governments. These are just small samples of the contributions Lori made during the 11 years at FSD. What made Lori a great Risk Director for the district was she was always, she always told it like it is and was always, and didn't hold anything back. Lori's last day of FSD was last Friday and we wish her all the best. Because of her new role, Lori now will be positively supporting, touching and lives of thousands more students, staff, parents and the community members. So definitely appreciate Lori very much on that.
Thank you so much. And thanks to Lori for her great years of service.
I have to say the same thing. I, I'm going to really miss her. I think that A-Skip now owes us a discount or something from recruiting her from us, right? Or we need something. But we wish her all the best and, and for you to bring the fact that she's affecting more lives in her new job makes me feel a little bit better. Thank you.
We have two public comments this evening. They will be allotted three minutes of time each, after which we will be taking a brief break. The Board follows rules of decorum per Board by law 9323. Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the Board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The Board limits the total time for public input on each item to be 20 minutes. The total time allowed for public comment shall be 30 minutes. Public comments about an item that is on the agenda will be heard at the time the agenda item is considered by the Board. Public comments about an item that is not on the posted agenda will be heard at the beginning of open session when called upon by the Board President. No action or discussion may take place on an item that is not on the posted agenda except as expressly authorized by law. Since the Board cannot take action on items that are not on the agenda, such items will be referred to the Superintendent for Handling. Board members may request that any item be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. The Board President and Superintendent will determine the best time to place an item on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the Board are invited to complete and submit a request to speak slip to the Executive Assistant. These slips are and have been available at the entrance of the room. We've received two today. Dr. Hammett, would you please set the timer? Rudy Kraus, would you please come to the podium?
Thank you. I consider Fullerton to be one of the more intelligent school districts in Orange County. I know Sugarman from like 2002, talking about the DARE program and DARE psychology and how DARE psychology was so wrong because they paired DARE and drugs together. And then that resulted in an increase in drug use from a just say no low of 27% to a high of, DARE high of 51%. So we're talking about psychology and behavior modification and classical conditioning. And I don't like when the Board of Education keeps on getting it wrong. Now, I wrote the whole DARE Gate investigation. I'm right on all of that. You check on all the mass shooters that are kid shooters, they're all DARE graduates, almost virtually all of them. Kebold, Harris, go up to San Diego and all that. Now, I'm looking at everything from the top of the world, from 30,000 feet down, Klaus Schwab World Economic Forum and social engineering, behavioral science. And we're watching the deconstruction of the United States and it's a trifecta power pyramid. There's only two elements. It's the black racist agenda and it's the homosexual agenda. 12%, 12%. The bottom is the 76% enablers, the lunatic left, the people that have no comprehension of what they're doing. They make no sense. The Board of Education are the enablers. And the US psychiatric system that's supposed to be stopping all of this lunacy, they are also the enablers. Now, what I'm talking about is also related to the transhumanist movement of Klaus Schwab from the top down, transhumanizing everyone. How are they doing this? They already did it with the vaccine. The real transers are the vaccinated. They crossed the species barrier when they injected the COVID virus parasite into their DNA, bonding to their DNA. It's not these gender bender kids that are putting lipstick on. That's like putting lipstick on a pig. Nothing changes. But the vaccinated, they are transers. My book, Vax Transhuman Chimera. Now, last time I talked about COVID gain of anaerobic function, which was gain of oxygen function. That's the science for it. I've written all of the science from the perspective of transhumanism and the work of Thomas Horn, Dr. Thomas Horn, who's one of the greatest transhumanists in the world. He's just laying out what Klaus Schwab has been doing. Is that me? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa James, would you like to come to the podium?
Hi. It's really like a lovely day today. So it's kind of hard when you come out from a really pretty day and come in here to talk about things that are kind of serious, right? But I think, you know, I do want to start off by saying that from my observation, this, this district is pretty good. I think Rudy is correct to say that. Some districts are imbalanced and they're not really focused on important things. So, but anyway, it is true that, you know, like California, we have great weather. This is like a great place to live. But we can't kid ourselves and say that, you know, our society is going downhill because it is. A lot of our institutions are compromised and that would be schools as well, right? So, and some people have good intentions, but, you know, some people don't. And it's really dangerous when you're not watching for the people with ill intent infiltrating and coming into your institutions. You know, schools are no different. So basically, as he was saying about CRT and the LGBTQ curriculum, I don't know if that's being taught here in Fullerton. I don't know. I know it's kind of across the board in California. So if this district does or doesn't, okay, whatever, that's okay. But I just want to say that a lot of parents are pushing back across the country, you know, about these controversial topics. Hello? Okay. I'll just hold it. It's controversial because young minds can't really like process that information, right? We're adults, so we could take it or leave it, but young people can't. And I think this is where we have to be very careful about what kind of topics come into the schools to influence kids, you know? Because a lot of it's dividing people, as we can see across the country. So I don't know how much more time I have, but I think it's important to be mindful of what's going on and, you know, think of like, don't think of the short term, right? You have to think of the long term of society. Because your kids and grandkids in the collective generations after that, they're all, we're all going to, you know, like be affected by anything negative, even though we don't feel it right now. So I think it's important to look at it that, like that. Just make sure that, you know, if you have a debate with somebody you know about this, that you know, like, you have to be sure that you feel in your heart that your moral imperative is correct. If it doesn't feel right to you, then you know, you shouldn't go along just to get along. I think that's really important because I think a lot of people do in society and it's not really going to be a good journey for us down the line if we just go with trends just because they're in. That's not going to be, you know, like important for us. So I think also, well, okay, thank you. So just think about the long run, not the short run. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to recess for five minutes. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the June 20th, 2023 minutes?
I'll motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, you have to abstain.
Oh, yes. But you can still second it. You just can't.
I second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from June 20th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstaining.
4-0-1, the minutes are approved. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move that we approve tonight's agenda in its interesting presentation way.
Yes. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Do any board members have any changes that they'd like to see tonight's consent agenda? Any items polled? Any items for discussion?
I don't want to poll anything, but I wanted to make a couple of comments related to consent item B around the contract for the superintendent's assessment.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah? Okay. I, obviously, it's my first time doing this, and so I had some questions about the process and what it looked like and, you know, what, how do we prepare as board members? So I had a chance to talk with Dr. Bob and find out a little bit more. And I'm wondering if it makes sense in the future. I think, you know, I wasn't here for half a year. It's approved, the process, and we'll do it as has been. But thinking through the next year, I wondered what the board thought about the idea of setting some specific objectives and goals for the superintendent in addition or as part of the board goals that normally he would be responsible for, but looking at specifically a focus for this school year. So finding that sweet spot where we might say, you know, all of the board goals are meant to be achieved, but this is where we expect you to put your energy, your time, your efforts this year so that it provides more focus for him and then brings clarity so that he knows what's priority for us as a board. So I wanted to see, because as my understanding is that hasn't been the case in the last few years at least.
I would ask that we bring that up in our protocol meeting that's coming up so that we can talk about that because I don't think the contract is a place to do that. I think that's something that we talk about as a change in what we've been doing as a process, as opposed to just having a facilitator at this moment. I think it, you know, even if we did something like that, still having a facilitator could work, but I would be interested in talking about that more at a different time, maybe at our protocol meeting or something.
Okay. So not at the review of an assessment that's on August 22nd, but at a different time after that?
Correct.
Okay. I agree with Bev. Okay. Do we know when we're going to be doing a protocol conversation?
October 3rd.
Okay. Okay. Yeah?
Any other questions or comments on that particular item? Is that sufficient, trustee?
I think so. I think for me, with the process I've been also trying to clarify is we have our board goals, but then figuring out the difference between those ways that we hold the superintendent accountable and measure progress of the superintendent and all those who work for him, but then also our own board work and the focus that we have as a team and the way that we work together and having, like, teasing out the differences and then having some accountability of what we work on together versus what we expect the superintendent to do.
Yeah. And I think that's a very, that's a longer discussion than what we're doing right here. And I think that's something that we all probably have an opinion about, and I would rather do that when we have time to do that, when that's a spot where, because I don't want to come in and change this, I personally don't want to come in and change the contract to reflect something different than what we've been doing because that's not fair to the superintendent who has been operating one way. I think that's something that if we're going to do it going forward, that's when we have to do it, as opposed to now when we're just ending it. So I would think it would not be in conjunction with this item. It'd be something completely separate.
Okay.
Just to maybe clarify, though, I don't think it's a, this item, item B is the contract with Dr. Keller, who's going to facilitate our evaluation of Dr. Pletka.
Yes.
And I think this is a question about how we evaluate Dr. Pletka, but you're saying.
This is the contract about him coming to do it, not about how we do it.
Sure.
So how we do it is a longer discussion than this person coming in to facilitate doing it.
So my question was, going forward, keeping the contract as for, as is for this previous year that we're reviewing, but does it make sense to, at that point, consider new ways of doing it in the future? And you're saying you want to wait until October rather than at this August 22nd date.
But this isn't Dr. Pletka's contract with the district, right? This is a contract for the facilitator.
Yes.
I think we could have a discussion at the time that we're having an evaluation and then decide then how we want to go forward, whether it's going to take a lot longer and then we do it later or we do it then and there.
Exactly. It just is too.
I would prefer to do it at a different time. I'm going to have to be doing the 22nd evaluation from out of the country, and I wouldn't be able to spend extra hours discussing this.
I would agree.
Okay. Any other, sorry.
Yeah, no. So I was just going to make sure I understood trustee Hendrick's kind of request. So it's also maybe potentially looking at the contract here that we might add some tasks to him, or we would add some additional tasks in the future, you're mentioning, like, on the evaluation component? Or is it just, like, would his, like, we're not trying to change the scope of the contract?
No, not at all. It'd be more about bringing a focus to objectives for that specific school year so that we can say this is the priority for this year and.
And what we're evaluating as opposed to.
Yeah. Because right now, I look at the board goals and it seems a huge task, and it's hard to say how to evaluate someone against all of those.
And what I'm saying is that that's a discussion that we need to have later because we, you know, we need to have that conversation. That's not something we can talk about right now when we're talking about this contract to go through the process. That's more of the process that we should talk about.
I do agree with trustee Berryman on that. Did you want to maybe just add?
Yeah, just a suggestion. I think we're really at the end of a cycle, so, end of a process, end of a set of board goals. And so we're just trying to close out kind of that process. And then I think for this coming year, we have new board goals, and for sure, you could, I think, at a second meeting, then talk about what that process might be. And if you want to add in objectives and goals, that's going to be, I won't say super lengthy, but it's going to take some time, and it'll probably take more time than outside the scope. One shocking piece of news, they are facilitated evaluations that usually take four hours. Now, maybe this year, just maybe, it'll be less than four. So typically, you guys haven't had a lot of time to do other things. It's a great four hours, everybody. It's a.
We get to know each other.
Dr. Bob's not in there the whole four hours. He's waiting somewhere, watching a Charger game.
I think the request is noted, though, and we'll be able to address that at another time. Any other questions or comments about the consent agenda tonight?
There were lots of, lots of items, triple, triple digits, right? So, yeah, yeah. I appreciate the fact that everyone answered questions that we had and got those answers out to all of us because I think that when I have a question, somebody else might have that same question that they didn't know what to ask. Again, it's we don't know what we don't know, and so someone brings something up, it's like an aha moment. So I appreciate the fact that you guys answered the questions. There were some things in here, again, looking at that we're, our community schools, you know, looking at that and being able to really invest more time to look at that and to renew those contracts and to provide those services for our families and our children is, it's near and dear to what we do here, so we appreciate that. I really like the fact that we have several schools that are looking at structured play during the lunchtime, during times where you can keep kids this way so that they're not all scattered around, you know, refereeing their own soccer games and making up their own rules. And we talk about conflict management. We talk about opportunities to teach kids to play together and to work together, to come to compromise. I know how crazy soccer games get when you have a lot of people that are very passionate about the game, right? So, and soccer being the world game, football, right? I think it's very important. So I think having the structured PE or lunchtime really makes a lot of sense. Again, speaking from someone who was working on a playground during lunch and recess, that's a good thing. Glad for the extensions, like I said, OC United, everything that we're doing to help our students and our families. And I think, I think that's it for me right now.
Any other questions or comments or shout outs from tonight's consent agenda? All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve tonight's lengthy, wonderful consent calendar.
And do we have a second, please?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Great. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Dr. Pletka, would you like to lead us into our next discussion item?
Sure.
Also an action item?
So with the police, we've had a good partnership and, you know, I've been through some more difficult or challenging times. They've been guardian angels, that they've come in and done a really, I think, a great job and kind of, one, caring about our community. And so you'll see Sergeant Bridges, like, everywhere. And so that piece has been such a, he has been somebody that has personally kept us abreast. He will call me, he's one of the, he and Chief Dunn both, we have their cell phones, and we call them, and we've called them at all late hours. This next item is to really increase the partnership, to do the source of things that I think a liaison officer, some added value. Some of that added value will be in emergency preparedness. We do preparation, and you saw, thank you Chad and Rob and Jeremy for putting that presentation together. But what, they do a good job, I think, in the community. putting that presentation together, um, but what, they do a good job, I think, in the communication and, and, but the inter-agency piece, that's something we need the police to do with us, and so this really provides us an opportunity to do, um, drills and preparation together. We, we, and it's great, we have high expectations about communication from our different organizations and agencies, and again, they do a good job, they call us when they can because they're dealing with the problem, um, but with, potentially with a liaison officer, we would get faster, quicker, um, real-time information about issues that affect us. And I think the other piece is again, working in collaboration and, and we do have, from time to hot, time, we have, um, people come on campus that are not necessarily parents or community, in some cases, uh, they can be inebriated, they can be high at times, and so while that doesn't happen all the time, it does happen from time to time, and so, um, there is sometimes a need for a police officer to come out and, and, and deal with some of those more difficult situations. So, um, this is not the sort of person that's going to be like doing, uh, in schools, doing some sort of undercover investigation with students, it's not that. It really is, um, somebody that's going to be, uh, that's going to build, really help us in cases of crisis and threats. So, and, and then the other piece is we're looking for a relationship, uh, and so somebody that is a point person, provides ongoing relationship and can be, can, that person can act with a consistency of values that we have, in terms of how we respond to community and, and also a level of accountability, um, that, uh, that we can ask for. So, we're looking forward, um, to, uh, continuing the partnership in this enhanced way. Right now, the contract would be for a year. Uh, this first year, we are paying for, um, the officer plus equipment. In subsequent years, if the, the board, uh, wanted to do this in the future, we would not be paying for, uh, equipment, it would be the on, at this point, it's eighty-five thousand dollars, um, for the officer and that would, what, what it would be in the future. I'm sure there'll be future cost increases, uh, over the next ten years or whatever, but at, at this point, you're approving a one-year contract that includes equipment costs built in, and in future years, we would not have those equipment costs.
I want to just note at this moment that a correction has been made to the second attachment on item A and the amended form was provided to, um, the board members. Is there any discussion from the board on this agenda item?
A few clarifying questions, just that came up as I was thinking about this. So if, if we were to do this, from what I'm understanding, it's somebody four days a week, ten hours a day, four tens?
Yes, approximately. And that, and it, uh, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't get service on the days that the liaison officer didn't work, but they enhance services for those four days.
Okay. That was another question I had had is if we do this, does that mean we don't get to call the police department whenever we want to? And your answer was no, we can still call them, so that was good.
Absolutely. I think Sergeant Bridges will still take our call.
He's gone now, so, yeah.
Dipping out on us.
Would you, would you have authority over whoever, whoever it is that they might, um, select or, if they come up with a candidate, do you have authority to interview that person and, and approve them before you hire them? Before we get, um, assigned an individual?
We, Chief Dunn and I have been talking about the sort of person that we need, um, for our community, and so I don't think we've quite worked out whether I'm sitting on the interview panel, but, um, will definitely be a part of the process. And I will say for the future too, um, obviously, the contract itself is dependent on the service that's provided in our district and for sure, as a, as a district, you, the, the piece that we can also hold our partner accountable is if they're not delivering on the service, um, we would, I would guess, uh, not authorize the second year. So I think we have accountability. I, one of the nice things about doing a one-year contract is it gives us, I think, greater, uh, I'll just say accountability on the position.
I would suggest strongly, I would, I would actually ask that you be part of that panel, um, because I do think that, although I trust the police department and I trust the fact that, you know, they would be looking out for our best interest and they would try and find the right person for this type of a position, not everyone is set to be this, and I, I don't want this to be a place where somebody that may not want to do what they're doing now, this is now their new job, I, I really want to make sure that we're getting the right person, um, and there are ways that, you know, that, that they, we could get somebody that I don't want to be, we don't, we shouldn't be the ones to, to, to take someone that is not a proper fit. So I, I personally would ask that you be part of that or designate that to somebody that you trust at the cabinet level to make sure that it is somebody who we feel like is going to, to be part of our community, because there is a certain thing that we're looking for, that would be one thing. Um, I would also ask how much time away? If this is a, if this is a full-fledged police officer, I know that they have required trainings, they have required meetings, they have, you know, all those other things that they might have to do, court dates, whatever, um, I would ask that we are, are very mindful of that and, and, you know, this person could now spend two of their four days somewhere else training, you know, for long periods of time, so I would want to see what that training schedule looks like upfront as well. Because if they're going to do that, maybe they do that in the summer, when, you know, it's not quite as busy, or during breaks, or try and tie it into times when there's not a lot going on on our campuses, so hopefully we could do that. Do we get the equipment? Do we get to keep the equipment?
Are you asking if the trustees sometimes get to use the equipment?
So if, if we're getting that wrapped up police car, you know, because we're paying for that, do they get, if we don't renew the contract, do you get the, do you get to drive around? Be one of your cars?
Totally legitimate question, in my opinion.
We know we don't get to keep the equipment.
But there, I mean, that is something, if we make a seventy-two thousand dollar investment for a one-year contract, is there like a buyback program?
Will they, yeah, prorate our money back? They can buy it back from us? Or it's a donate, is it a donation then? I mean, it's truly, I mean, if, something to think about.
Yeah, I, I thi, I think at this point, uh, we are hopeful, um, based on, again, uh, a good relationship and I anticipate it to be so, that, uh, the benefit is that we won't be doing the equipment each year, and so this is an investment, not just in a single year, but again, based on future performance and future partnership, we're hoping that this continues for years.
And, and is there an evaluation, I mean, are we tying in some kind of evaluation? Monthly, quarterly, I mean, how is that feedback happening with you and the chief or what have you on, is this working, is it not working, what do we need to tweak? Because I don't think coming in immediately, it's, it's going to have some process that we need to go through to make sure it happens and that, and it's, uh, smooth.
Yeah, I think two pieces. I mean, one is with Chief Dunn and Sergeant Bridges, I would, I, I would say that we probably communicate two, three, four times a month, especially, so between Dr. Hammond and myself, but I do, that's a great suggestion to have a formalized, uh, meeting about this. I think that's a great, um, idea, and I know Chief Dunn would be open to, to that so that we can do some feedback, whether, again, whether that's Sergeant Bridges or with Chief Dunn.
Thank you. That was all I had on.
And they may do that anyway because it's their employee also and they want to have feedback on their employee.
About the car and stuff, I understand exactly what you're saying, Bev, but I think that when you go into a relationship, you go in on a positive note, expecting it to be successful, expecting to have a good match, and expecting that we are going to find we get more than our money's worth. Yeah, I know, but, but what I'm saying is, I don't want the spirit out there to be that we're going in this with negative eyes, you know? I think that we need to go into this, this is a great idea, and to go into it in a positive way, and if it doesn't work as well as we think, then we can adjust, and it may work out better than we think, but, um, I think that I agree with you about the evaluation and the selection process and all of that, but I think that Dr. Pletka would probably, and his team, have those ideas under, under their brains anyway.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
Can I move that we, um, move forward with this?
Can I? I have a few more comments.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear, I didn't know that.
Just, I, I also had made a note about having some kind of review process and I think that, um, I would be curious to know the difference of how we respond with having a liaison versus, I know now we have a relationship and we have our monthly reports of when police are called, just to see the difference, I think would be really helpful data to understand, um, the difference in timeliness, uh, the way events are handled, you know, that kind of thing would be really helpful for us to understand the value that this brings, and then opportunities for change, right? And, and ways to improve, I think would be really important. Um, I was, I was wondering about, I guess, the approaches of, in response to students, you know, um, we have obviously like a non-violence approach to the way we deal with students, even in di, difficult circumstances on campus. What are the rules for a police officer interacting with students on campus? I don't know what that look, engagement looks like with minors. Do you know, and would that be clear, would that be something we could talk about?
So, there, there's three areas where we're required to call the, uh, the police on. So one is illegal drugs and, and one of the reasons for that is, at some point, if you have drugs, it would be, we would now be in possession of an illegal drug.
It's not wise to touch them.
Right, so we call the police, um, related to that. Um, our own folks typically do the, you know, this, the search and, you know, look through the backpacks and those sorts of things. We typically, our administrators have, uh, do those sorts of things. The second thing, in addition to the drugs, weapons, and while that doesn't happen all the time, for sure, there are things like switchblades, pepper spray and those sorts of things, and, and again, um, it was, we use a switchblade, it's il, it's illegal, so we would call the police on those sorts of things. And so, and then the third is actually, uh, child pornography, and it, of course, it can be very nefarious, but it can also just be, sometimes it's a boyfriend-girlfriend situation and they send each other, uh, photographs of their own body, which, um, is actually considered child pornography and we have to call the police, so the police come in for those sorts of situations. We are not asking them and we haven't, um, in the past, had police officers come in, they don't break up fights. Police officers don't come in and, uh, you know, we've seen things on the, on the news, like throw kids on the ground and, uh, put them in handcuffs and take them away. Um, I do believe that there was a situation, um, I think seven years ago, where there was, um, potentially a, um, a gun on campus, and in that case, the, the, in that very specific case, and there was a, a threat of violence, that was handled slightly different, um, but day-to-day, um, police officers are there for those three, three cases, and the one that's pretty, it's fairly typical is, again, we, uh, whether that's, um, marijuana, and even though it's legal in California, it's not legal for kids under eighteen. So, um, those are the sorts of things.
But like, let's say on a campus, police officer or liaison officer is already there and they see a fight happening, what would be their rules of engagement for?
They wouldn't engage, that's.
They wouldn't?
No, because we, and in that case, our safety monitors would engage, our pupil supervisors, and quite frankly, it'd probably be the, either assistant principal or principal, that would engage. We, we do not want the police officer in those sorts of situations, and we'll be very clear that that's not the role of the police.
Yeah.
You know, a, a, and if it was a more serious situation, uh, I hate to give some examples, but I, I will, there was, um, a few years ago, there was actually, uh, Fight Clubs that was occurring not on campus, but office, off-campus, and you had groups of junior high kids that were meeting a few years back, um, and in that case, you wouldn't have a single officer, usually in that case, multiple officers would, would have shown, shown up. So, but on campus, we don't want them in that role and they won't be doing that. It's pretty much the three issues that we're talking about. There are some others, um, there are definitely cases of child abuse, police officers will come out in, in those cases as well, but they're not taking kids away in that situation.
I think that really helps eliminate some of my concerns and I think fears of the community to hear that, and I, I'd love to see that in writing, you know, in part of the contract and the MOU that we have, is just that clarity, because I think it helps not only the officer and our staff know the rules and the boundaries, but also assures parents and community members what that looks like.
Yeah, oh, in fact, I, what we can do is I'll just make, at our monthly meeting with either Sergeant Bridges or Chief Dunn, we'll make sure that that's in writing, that that's one of the expectations.
Yeah, I think, I, I just want to say, I appreciate, uh, that I think you, you did listen to the community and to us and some of the comments in the last couple of weeks that we've had around this, because, you know, it's not just a repackaging of the same idea with a new title. I see some changes in the scope of work and the expectations of this role, and to me, because it's articulated what the expectations are and the role of especially prevention and emergency preparedness, that it feels like what we're doing is addressing external threats to our kids and our staff, rather than policing and surveilling our children. And that's really important, and I think that message is, needs to be very clear to our community, the purpose of that. Along with, I just, I have to say, I think it's important that we also remind our community that law enforcement and communities, our staff never, are a place where immigration or customs enforcement would happen, and we do not provide or have that sort of information that identifies children's or families' immigration status. So, just some of those, those are some of the concerns and fears I think our community has in associating relationships with police, and I, I feel like you've addressed many of those, so I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments on this item? We have half of a motion to approve. Trustee Sugarman, seeing no further questions, comments, or discussion, would you like to continue your motion?
That is my motion.
Great, is there a second?
I'll second.
Before we vote, any final discussion, comments, or questions? All those in favor of, uh, item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, that's five zero, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Dr. Koglin, please join us at the podium. We are not, um, adjourning into corporations tonight for the next few items, correct?
I am sorry, is this on? I'm sorry that, yes, we do not need to do that tonight. Uh, so the next two items, I'm going to talk about them both together, they need, do need to be, uh, voted on separately, but we might as well talk about them together. Item B, uh, this is the resolution, uh, for the parcels, the Van Dale CFD, which is over State College in Bassett Chury. This is an annual, item that's brought to the board. Sometimes it's brought in May, sometimes June, or in July. This is a levy, a tax on those parcels that was created, uh, over twenty years ago. It will continue until 2031. Uh, there are, for that Van Dale, there are ninety-one taxed parcels, and it is one thousand two hundred thirty dollars fifty-six, regardless of the size of the parcel. Item C is Amrich Heights, which is over by Fissler. Uh, many more parcels over there, there's one thousand one hundred twenty-nine taxed parcels of, and those are based on the size of the parcel, anywhere from eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents a parcel, all the way up to two thousand one hundred and forty dollars and twenty-eight cents. Uh, this is something that, uh, when the homeowners move in there, uh, they are aware of this, this is not a new tax, uh, to them. It pays off the existing, uh, CFDs, uh, that were taken out, as I said, uh, over twenty years ago.
Dr. Koglin, we're talking about Melo Ruse, right?
Melo Ruse, correct.
So these items need to be, um, voted on separately, that's why we have, um, item B and item C. Are there any further questions, comments, discussion for Dr. Koglin or superintendent, like, um? If not.
Can I ask, how many more years do these go out?
Great question. Uh, these are scheduled to be paid off in 2031.
Two thousand thirty-one, and they're part of their mortgage in many cases?
Uh, if they've rolled in their taxes, like their property taxes, it's, it's part of that. Some people pay their property taxes, it's on that bill, pay them separately.
Thank you.
Is it the, the same end year for both of these developments?
Yes, and, um, I'm trying to remember when, but these have been refinanced, um, a couple times. Back a few years ago when interest rates were lower, uh, the board refinanced those, uh, thus bringing down the payments. We did not keep the extra funds, we gave the money back to the taxpayers in the form of a reduced Melo Ruse tax.
Great.
I move that we adopt resolution twenty-three dash, or slash twenty-four.
I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-three dash, or slash twenty-four, CFD forty dash oh-one, authorizing and providing for the levying of special taxes within the Community Facilities District two thousand dash one Van Dale.
Thank you for that thorough motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, the motion carries five-zero. Thank you, everyone. Do I have a motion to approve item C?
So, go ahead, go ahead.
I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-three slash twenty-four, CFD forty-eight dash oh-one, authorizing and providing for the levying of special taxes within the Community Facilities District Amrich Heights.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Great, the motion carries five-zero. Dr. Koglin, item D.
Item D is a resolution authorizing designated district personnel to sign various documents. If you look in many of our job descriptions, it, one of the job descriptions is you have to be able to sign your name multiple times. And so, with Dr. Lee, who left the district, she's now in and out of the district, we have to remove her from the list and we have to interim chief academic officers that are on the list. So, anytime somebody leaves and comes on, then we bring these to the board.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? If not, do we have a motion to approve this item?
Sure, I make the motion to adopt, D, adopt Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, oh-one. Oh, yeah.
I second.
Great, thank you. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero, thank you.
And next item E, similarly, these are for electronic approval vendor claims, same with the additional and deletion of name.
Any questions, comments, concerns? If not, do we have a motion to approve this item?
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, oh-two.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero, thank you.
Okay, next item?
Yes, please.
Right, next item F is a resolution which would authorize staff to begin the negotiations with the city to, over a, the creation of a CFD, which is similar to the two that you did approve. In this case, though, the board would not have the authority over those, you would not have to manage those. This would be a CFD between a developer and the city of Fullerton. The development that we're talking about is up at kind of the intersection of Euclid and Rosecrans up there. There are scheduled to be one hundred and thirteen residential units that are going in, forty-nine single-family detached homes and sixty-four townhomes. Normally, what happens when new development comes into Fullerton, the developer pays what's known as a developer fee. And we, the district, because of the impact of the additional square footage and people moving in, it now impacts our district and we have growth. Either current and/or future growth because of those developments. And for a development this size, with our current level-one rates, we would receive approximately seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in developer fees. By the creation of this CFD between the city and the developer, we, this is something that developer wants to do. We would be given a premium, if you will, a twenty percent premium is what we're going to try to negotiate. So, instead of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, we would receive eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. We would receive it a few months later, possibly a half year later. We would receive it when the bonds are sold, instead of the developer coming up with the money and paying us directly. And so, it was recommended by our fi, our financial advisor, Tim Carty, Piper Sandler, brought this forward to us and said, this may be something, is a good way to bring in a little extra funds into the district and, and try and negotiate with the city on this CFD.
So, sorry, Dr. Koglin, for this development called, which is supposed to be called The Pines at Sunrise Village, I guess. We just did two Melrose for more recent developments. This is just for the developer fees, right? This is not, will there also be a Melrose component to this new development, or is this in lieu of that?
So, when, this would, this would be with the city. This would be kind of their Melrose tax that would be, and money would go to the city. Now, keep in mind, on developer fees, two-thirds of the developer fee money goes to us, the other one-third goes to the high school district. So, this is something that the high school district would more than likely enter into with the city. The developer also has to pay fees to the city for streets and sewers, and so, it's all wrapped into that. The advantage is the developer doesn't come up with the money right away for this. It's wrapped in and sold in as these Melrose tax with the bonds.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think piggybacking on what, what you were saying is that, so that we would not, we wouldn't know, we would not have these, this facility on our agenda. So, that, we would not be managing that, we'd be out of it, we get our money and be done.
You, so what would happen is where you now have two titles from those other CFD, you would not have a third title that would belong over the city. We would not have to, once we enter into this, we would not be levying these fees like we just did, it would all be done through the city.
So, what, is there a catch?
That was my question.
Right, I mean, why, what is?
Why not?
What are we not seeing?
As best as I've been able to ascertain is, again, the developer, it's a lot of money that the developer would need to come up with. And with interest rates, you know, money is not cheap anymore. And it's quite a substantial amount of money that the developer needs to come up with before they can start selling these, you know, homes and starting to recoup their, their money back. So, what this does is it kind of puts things on hold. We receive our money when the bonds are sold. And because we're willing to wait a little bit, we get that, that premium.
Buys them some time.
Buys them some time, correct.
So, we get it in a lump sum, but not through an expanded period of time?
Actually, we get it in a lump sum, correct, because under the old way, I have a chart here. So, basically, we, we may start getting, if, if we went the old route, we would get maybe, say, seventy-seven thousand dollars at the end of this year. And then in the, end of the first quarter of next year, we'd get maybe another eighty thousand. And so, it would all kind of trickle in as they're developing. Now, we're looking at probably first quarter of twenty twenty-five, we would receive all eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And it could be, it could be more, we could, we, we're going, they're going to try to negotiate as high as possible for the district. But I think there's a, there is a sweet spot, typically, it's about twenty percent.
So, will we be sending a negotiator along with the district, the high school district to some meeting with the developer, or?
So, what would happen is I would, I would be, you would authorize me, I'd be working with Tim Carty, I'd be working with our attorney and also with Cooperative Strategies, who we would be working with the city and the developer to, to kind of set this amount.
Okay, and assuming if there's no deal, it just goes back to?
It goes back to the level-one developer fees, correct.
And you're recommending this?
My recommendation is for this amount of money and this is, yes, it's my recommendation.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I think it's great that we get it in a lump sum, because that's what we need to build a new classroom or NPR or whatever it takes to accommodate new kids, right? So, if that's the idea that we have more students, it provides the means for us to service those kids.
A new gym at Parks.
If that's the, well, I mean, we have to think about, is it related to the location or, yeah, how do we, how do we choose that?
Just, just on a lighter note, is this the one that's near the Del Taco and the fifty-five and older?
The combo. This is now, this is now a commercial for Del Taco.
Are they tearing down your home, Dr.?
It's right next, I think it's right next to it, right?
It is, it's right there.
Your dinner right after this.
We have been told that they are keeping the Del Taco.
Yeah, the Del Taco's staying, from what I heard.
This is not a, I like this, but I don't like the development. It's very crowded, there's no parking. The city has decided to do it, so we have no say in it. And therefore, we have to make the best of whatever. And so, I would move to accept it and get more money, because I think it's not a good development for our community.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that all five of us?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are you leaving us?
No, I'll be back.
Oh, good.
Dr. Hammett, I think the next two items are both you, right?
Been so long.
Yes, they are. The next item is item G, which is a approval of a new committee on assignment recommendation for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We did bring some committees on assignment to the board last month. However, we have some electives that we need to offer in the My Connect Academy, which require, because we have so few teachers in that program, we have to utilize teachers sometimes out of their credential areas. So, this action would allow these folks who don't have a credential in this area, but do have the expertise to teach these courses, to teach these elective courses in the My Connect Academy program.
Any questions, comments from the board? Do we have a motion to approve?
So, just one question. So, Dr. Hammett, so these teachers know what they're doing in these areas, they have some training?
They do. They have training and experience, they, they've taught these types of courses before, so this would not be new to them, and so, they'll, they're prepared to teach these courses, yes.
Thank you, then I would approve the new committee on assignment recommendations.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five-zero, thank you.
The next item is item H, which is approve the revised board policy, five-one-four, five-point-one-two, search and seizure. And this was a board policy that we brought back to the board for a first read. We went through, we made changes as recommended by CSBA and made a few clarifications based upon board comments. So, we're now bringing this item back to the board for potential approval.
I see that you clarified the property and the lockers and that, so that was good, thank you for doing that.
So, I had some additional thoughts about this and it's, I think the issue of electronic devices needs to be dealt with. And so, whether it's something that we embed in this as property or, and that can be seized, or refer to our student technology use policy is another option. But I wanted to bring that before you guys, because I thought of this, I think, yesterday and I called Jeremy and said, what about this? Because, you know, right now, obviously, we provide electronic devices, computers, tablets to all of our students. Those are FSD property, just like desks and lockers are. And we also know that they can be used for harmful things, illegal things. And so, there are good reasons sometimes to se, se, search and seize these electronic devices and tools.
When they get these devices, do they, don't they sign a paper saying that they're ours? And that we can do whatever we need?
Yeah, they do that through air every year because they agree, or they, they agree that they've read, they don't actually have to agree to the AUP, because it's, it's our policy and it's what we do. But every year in air, the, it's part of what they do as parents, is they, they go through the acceptable use policy that outlines, you know, they're, you know. We can look, I can look and see about search and seizure, if we add it, we do add that it's our device and that there's no expectation of privacy and we can see everything that goes on, on, on all of our devices at all times. I can look and see if we specifically talk about seizure, but it's, being that it's our property, we do, we do seize whenever we need to, to search.
And, and it does cover a student's personal electronic device in the policy?
Yeah, but not FSD-owned electronic devices. So, it's something I feel like, at the very least, we should mention that, you know, they are our devices, we have the right to take them at any point. But I have some suggestions, we could add an entire paragraph talking about that. It's just more like, do we want to go into detail of this particular policy, or do we want to reference our student technology use policy, I think? But I think acknowledging that is really important, because I think students assume it's theirs and they can do what they want with it. And I think the reminder that this, it is FSD property and that sometimes, I think, electronic devices, as we saw, are really insightful for helping us know if there's harm intended or cause to students. So, I mean, Dr. Pletka already brought up child pornography. Right now, we know that, I mean, I was looking at Thorn is an organization that studies these issues and they said that a survey of a thousand kids in twenty twenty-one, fourteen percent of kids nine to twelve years old have shared their own self-generated notes. That's child pornography. And our kids don't understand or realize that oftentimes, but they may be using their devices to take images or collect images online that are not only illegal, but harmful. And so, I think that there is a, a need for us to consider our policy and how we include that in this process of, of searching FSD-owned devices.
So, so the question is, is that, is that covered somewhere else in detail? I mean, I think that would be my question, because I wouldn't want to, I mean, if it's somewhere else in detail and we just make reference to it, I would be in agreement to that. But if we have to write a whole nother paragraph for this, I would ask that we delay this another, another meeting until we can see if, in fact, it's covered somewhere and how we would address that. Because I agree that we should address it, but I don't know if it's better to address it here or reference it somewhere else.
I think by, oh, I was just going to say, sorry, by not referencing school devices, I think it's intentionally indicating that this is, this does not apply. But we can add, you know, for district devices, see board policy.
But we don't know if it's in there, that's what I'm saying. We need to make sure it's in there.
You know, we've got this, we said we were going to review the student technology use policy. That's something that we need to revisit, right? So, I think that there's potential for, it would probably be me, more work on that end, and this would be more of a reference to the policy that is yet to be updated. But I think there are, like, there are some simple ways we could update it, just as, you know, searches of student locker desks and FSD-owned electronic devices, we can include it there. There's above, you know, some of the comments I would add are, you know, it says, governing board is fully committed to promoting a safe learning environment, eliminating the possession of use of weapons, illegal drugs, and other controlled substances, as well as harmful illegal images and electronic communication. You know, just having phrases that integrate it, I think, could, it, it sets the tone that it's not just physical weapons, but, but electronic devices, that it can also be both illegal and also reveal harm that may be caused to students. I think about, you know, kids make threats online, they access information online, and that might be useful for us to know if there's a concern about a student's well-being.
Dr. Pletka?
So, my suggest, my suggestion would be, I think it's, would be great, you could add just in, you know, FSD devices, I mean, you could reference the iPad, of course. I think a longer version would be very appropriate in kind of the, the internet policy that we're trying to put forward. And I know, is it April, or August twenty-ninth, I believe, we're going to refer to that. And, and from your discussion, we're going to basically create a policy. We have a CSBA template for it, but based on the discussion, we would add it. So, my suggestion is go ahead and add in, if there's a phrase that you want to add in specifically, FSD devices, but then do the further development at our August twenty-ninth, and then you can, it can be more comprehensive. And I think it will be nested in, in an area that I think will make maybe even more sense. But again, I think the references, I, I don't think it really takes away, and if you want to add it, I think feel free to do it.
So, then we would bring, we would bring those two back at that time?
Yeah, so, so one is just go ahead and add in, I think that's fine, you know, FSD devices, add that piece in. I think the, the longer version, I think that goes into the, I would suggest putting that into the next policy.
Did you want to read us something, Jeremy?
Yeah, if you want, so this is, this is in the, the technology use AUP, which is not the board policy. This is actually the document that goes out to parents in air, which is launching in like a week and a half or so. So, section two-point-eight, no reasonable expectation of privacy. Students should not expect privacy in the contents of their personal files in the district network, district-approved cloud storage systems and records of their online activity. The district's monitoring of internet usage can reveal all activities students engage in using the district network, including but not limited to documents, chats, and emails. Students will not attempt to change their district-designed password on any program unless authorized by IIS. The district may employ technologies to track certain app usage behaviors, words or phrases contained in student data documents, emails, devices, et cetera. Maintenance and monitoring of the district network may lead to discovery, students have violated this regulation, student conduct policy or the law. An individual search will be conducted if there is reasonable suspicion that a student violated this regulation, the student conduct policy, or the law. The investigation will be reasonable and related to the suspected violation. So, we, and then above, it has everything else you've been talking about, the images. The images, the pornography, the obscenity, the breaking of law, the things that are not based on education. So, we have in here, we will search your device, and there's no expectation really of anything you do on our network at any time. And so we can point back to the AUP, we can point back to, whatever policy we come up with in August, we'll point back to the AUP that's already in place as well, so.
So, at this point, can we, I mean, I have a couple of just small edits we could circulate, or I could give to Anna and then share a document of just inserting some of those references to electronic communication. We could review it together to then finalize this policy, but then examine that at a later point. Does that sound reasonable? And then we'd, but we would, we would hold up voting tonight then on this?
Yeah, because like I suggested, I think we bring those two back simultaneously and be able to approve those, even if it is just the discussion. So we know what we're including into the internet policy, and then also approving this final draft with that included in it.
Dr. Hammett, there's no deadline, right?
There is no deadline, no. We can bring this back to our next meeting in August.
Just to make sure that that piece is included.
Did anyone else have any other edits or changes to the policy?
No, but we'll put this on the next agenda. And then you can submit possible language trustee handshake to Anna, and she can share it with the rest of us. All right, thank you. Moving on to section 10, item A. Dr. Hammett?
Yes, this is a first reading of board policy 1312.2, related to complaints concerning instructional materials. We have made, albeit a small change, a change to this item to put it into compliance with what's being recommended by CSBA and their legal department as far as this board policy is concerned. This is a first reading, so if board members have any comments, any input, any feedback, please let us know, and we can make changes to this proposed policy.
Any other questions or comments from the board on this, this item, this first reading?
I do.
Please?
Okay. A couple of things. I appreciate that, I think that the change of the board being the final decision makes sense and that we're elected to make these final calls by the community. I am curious, there seems to be, to me, I read it with a lack of clarity of when a complaint is escalated from a superintendent or designees' decision versus a committee. And I, I would like to know more about what warrants a committee in a complaint situation. You know, is that some, should that be our default? Like, if we're, if someone brings a complaint, should the default be, let's send it to a committee if at all possible? Or should it be the superintendent is the default and committee is only in certain cases where it can't be answered quickly or, or there's no law that relegates, you know, directly answers those questions?
I recommend default to me and then to pull the committee. Because there's a lot of thing, there's just a lot of different complaints that, that oftentimes isn't about everybody else's curriculum. It's very personal. It's to them. So, you know, they'll say, "I don't want my child to participate in this aspect or that." And they're not asking for all kids not to participate. It's very personal to them. And so, you know, those things that they're asking for, like at a grander scale, that's more of a committee piece. But I receive frequently concerns that I resolve all the time. You know, I meet with somebody, we spend some time. And most of the complaints I receive are very, like, personal about their family and their child and their experience. I wouldn't want to recommend every, one is, I want to still be able to deal with concerns and complaints from the community and take care of them. I can usually take care of complaints and concerns pretty quickly. Not always, as you saw last year, some of them took a little longer. But generally speaking, we can resolve them. I think the committee, in my mind, would be for something that's like, we can use the plays as an example, across the district where we're now trying to set guidelines. I think those are committee and board, you know, that would be a great piece. But again, I, all the time, will have somebody just say, you know, and hey, I don't feel comfortable with my child participating in X, Y, Z. So I think the default, when it would come to me, and then if it's, what they're really asking is for a large-scale piece, that's great for a committee.
So, so let me maybe give an example, though. Let's say there's a reenactment of shooting, you know, from some historical aspect. And a parent first comes and says, "I don't want my child to participate." And then that's maybe easily resolved. But then what if they start gathering signatures saying, "I think this type of activity should not continue at this school anymore"?
And that's a great, that would be a great kind of committee piece to look at. Because now they're, they're not just asking for their child or for a specific thing. For example, we have families that popped out of the sex ed, and that happens. And in some cases, they do ask, but it, that would stop all of it. But in most cases, they're just saying, "I don't think my child's ready." But yes, I think the example you just gave is a good example when we might bring in a committee to say, "Look, this is, this is a concern at a large scale," and then it would go to the committee.
Okay.
Well, it seems, okay, so criteria would be the committee is triggered when there's...
A broader issue.
A broader issue, and it has impact for multiple students, not just an individual?
Right. Because a family, I mean, just to say, I resolve literally, in some cases, hundreds of issues every year with, with parents to say, hey. And they're not even asking, I know from a social media perspective and from a news perspective, there's a lot of attention to these huge issues that are sweeping through a district. Most of the things, the concerns I get are not that. It's their child and this specific thing that was handled in a certain way, or they don't, didn't appreciate the way it was handled, or they want me to handle it differently. So I want to be able to resolve problems fairly quickly, and usually I do. And so I wouldn't want this to kind of get in the way of just being able to help families that need it. I think this is perfect for the issues. Again, we can use the play as the one that happened. That's a great issue that we'd go to a committee. Those are the sorts of things where multiple voices, and especially an issue like that that runs across schools, you know, like something like a play. Every school does plays, and so that's a good committee thing. But again, a parent that says, you know, "I don't want my child to read this library book." Okay, you know, that's your choice as a parent. It's very specific.
But if they say, "I don't want any children to read this library book," are you saying then a committee makes that decision? Or is it, you look at the law and say, "No, California state law..."
I mean, generally speaking, we wouldn't pull, we don't pull books. We usually, our default has been that a parent makes a decision about their child. So if they say, "I don't want my child to read this book, I don't want my child to participate in a certain activity," you know, occasionally we'll get, maybe it's an assembly, somebody doesn't want their child to participate. So those are the sorts of decisions that I work with families all the time, and we work with it. I can't, I can't think of a situation where a parent asks me to pull something for the whole community, and we didn't. And in the case of the, even the case of the play, that didn't happen. It wasn't related to a single complaint or concern, whole other issue. So, just to say, I, we've never pulled something for a whole school or a whole community or a whole grade level because of a single complaint. Now, just, it is, there are times where someone will point out something to say, "Oh, did you know?", and, you know, if it goes against a policy that we have or whatever, you know, it's like, we would respond to that. I can't think of one off the top of, top of my head, but...
Can we just maybe talk out loud, do an exercise? If one day we get 500 parents across the district that want us to ban three or four different books or pull them from our libraries, that, that's automatically a committee issue?
Right, so those would be the sorts of, like, a committee. But again, if I get, if somebody said, "I would like you to pull this out," let's say, pull a book out across, and this is a kind of an individual person, typically, we would, we wouldn't do that. And I, I mean, I'll take whatever direction. But if I get a single concern from a single parent that wants me to pull a book from a library, in, in our past, I haven't done that, and I, but if that's what you want the committee to do, generally speaking, if it's an issue that gets some traction where we have parents that might be, and again, it doesn't just have to be a tech, a library book. I know that's been in the media and news. But, you know, what's used curriculum, I mean, that's actually probably a more relevant example. We, I have had in the past, we have had families that say, "I don't want my child to participate in sixth grade. It's world religi-" It's ancient history, but world religions are typically organizing factors in early civilizations. And so it's sometimes almost impossible to pull out the organizing religion from ancient civilization formation and development. And so in that case, we sometimes do have parents say, "Well, I don't want my child to participate in this aspect." And they can, but we would not pull ancient civilizations because of a parent. And even if 10 parents came, to be honest, that's state curriculum. We would not stop teaching state curriculum or state standards. To be honest, even if 500 parents came and said, you know, "I want you to get rid of ancient civilizations," I wouldn't even want to give that to...
We have gotten rid of ancient civilizations. We have modern now.
Just study it.
So, it's, it's, I wouldn't want to give power to a committee to get rid of things that we're obligated by law to teach.
Yeah.
So, I think we just have to tread like...
I mean, that's a clear criteria, right? If we're obligated by law, it makes those decisions around curriculum much easier. I think it's more like the novel that the library thought was great for fourth graders, and then the question is, is it? And that's where I think clarity of when you decide versus a committee decide is helpful.
Yeah. I mean, if we're talking specifically about library books, again, whatever, I mean, whatever direction that you give, we typically have not pulled library books because somebody has complained. And I don't even know if I had five people on a committee and five people said, "I think you should pull this book." I don't even know if we would do that. I think we try to use some standards of something as an example that's developmentally appropriate. We have, we also have direction from the board about areas of cultural assets. And so even if 10 people said, "We don't want you to have a book about, let's say, Latino art," so, just tread that it may not go in the direction that you want. And again, when you talk about a committee size, I usually, generally, have direction of what I think the board wants. I think where, where we've called it, I think, I guess, asking that, you allow me to use the judgment on that? The play is a good example of, we have a committee, we should have a committee. That's great. We're getting feedback. And we're not even talking about what we're gonna pull plays or not plays. We're just kind of trying to create some frames and some criteria around it. Those are the sorts of things committees do a great job at. Here, here's a lens to look at selections. So, I think it could be dangerous to go down and say, "Let's let five people decide on things that you, as a board, have already given me direction to do." Again, we already do make some decisions for sure. What we allow first graders to read and eighth graders, those are different, and there's different curriculum. I generally have pretty clear direction from you on those things. In the past, other sorts of things, we have the sex ed curriculum that came out from the state a few years ago. We did have a committee on that. Those are the sorts of things that we pull together. And in the future, if we have controversial topics, we would do it. Definitely curriculum adoptions. We have committees. We would have parent input. I think generally it's not to have a committee to look at a particular book.
Not a great use of resources.
Yeah.
We have a sentence here. It's a new sentence to the policy. Says, "Complaints are encouraged to accept the superintendent's, complainants are encouraged to accept the superintendent's or review committee's decision. However, if the complaint finds that decision unsatisfactory, he or she may appeal the decision to the board." I, I really like that. Sort of nice to know. It gives people the feeling that there's a place they can go, and they're not just, it's not just a one-shot thing. But maybe that should read, "Complaints are encouraged to accept the superintendent's or review committee's decision. The superintendent has the final right for decision." Because if a committee comes up with a decision that, let us say, is not appropriate for the curriculum, then the superintendent has to just ignore that decision or not accept it. So maybe that's the real thing we need to add here. The superintendent has the final authority.
But isn't the change, isn't this change mandated, which is why we're doing this? Because it now has the board to approve it?
Well, then, then it would say, "However, if the complaint finds that decision unsatisfactory, he or she may appeal the decision to the board." I'm not saying to eliminate that. I'm just saying that, or review committee's decision, but that the default is the superintendent, and then if they don't like it, they can come to us.
So it goes from the committee to the superintendent, then to the board? So you add a layer in there and tweak it so that...
Just for safety, in case there's a decision reached that is not appropriate to state law or federal law. A committee might say, "We're gonna do, high school, we're gonna do away with ROTC." But they could say that, but maybe the board doesn't want that. Or maybe there's some state that passed a law that says you have to have ROTC. I don't know. And so the superintendent would have final authority or a book.
I think it kind of depends, goes back to then who the makeup of our committee is. Because if we have some of our FSD staff and they know the law, they're not gonna allow curriculum to pass that's either not in compliance with EDco.
Maybe.
I mean...
Maybe.
I think, that, I mean, that's their job, and our teachers should also understand those standards, you know? So I think if our committee is made up of staff, we should be able to trust that they would not...
But maybe the committee would also have public.
Would what?
Also have public.
Include the public? Absolutely, yeah. And that's, that's another question I had as to whether, I mean, it is, the committee, it seems like, should be experts on the topic. But also, it seems parents, community members could be a part of that, yeah?
And we don't want to be too specific because then that ties everybody's hands.
I guess one of the questions that I have is, what are you hoping the policy is going to accomplish? Because if the policy is about generating new resources, new curriculum, we have committees for sure on those things. So whether that's library books, we have folks from Jeremy's department, for sure. Principals are part of which books they get. They have PTAs that are part of that process. If it's textbook adoptions, we have a very formalized process. So in the generation of resources, we have committees. And then, yes, it goes to me for final approval, but I don't even remember the last time a committee came up with a series of library books or curriculum that I voted down or told not to go. If you're talking about the withdrawal or of, of resources or curriculum, if it's curriculum, I, that would be really something either you or you collectively or me would ultimately do. Because I, ultimately, we're responsible from a legal standpoint. We wouldn't want to give that to a committee. If you're talking about specifically, let's say, library books, plays, and trying to pull those things...
That's what this talks about.
So that's what it's specific about. I mean, at this point, our, I guess, our approach has been not to pull things from libraries or plays. And again, the one play, there's a specific reason I've spent a long time sharing about, which has nothing to do with, with that specific thing. But if we're trying to, I'm trying to come up with some, I can't even think of examples other than pulling a library book, and currently, we don't. We'll check. I mean, we do get stuff sometimes that's just junk. We also have books that fall apart. We don't ban the book, but at some point, it gets pulled because there's 14 pages missing, and so those...
Well, and there's outdated things, right? There's, whether it's historical fact, I mean, historical... Well, and there's outdated things, right? There's, whether it's historical fact, I mean, historical information that's no longer relevant, or.
Like Pluto, is it a planet or not? It's not now, but it was?
Information changes. But then also, I mean, obviously, what's going on around our country is, is people are concerned. I mean, whether, there are some things that maybe we'd love to update, you know, gender stereotypes in books. But then there's also things that people are trying to pull because they don't want conversations being had with our kids. And, um, you know, and there are a lot of specific California state guidelines that tell us that we need to represent our people groups well and ensure that kids have opportunities to read and learn. So, I think I, my concern is more about how do we make sure there's an appropriate process so that we are protecting our kids' right to information, their right to knowledge, and, and, you know, that our places, libraries are rich resources, and it's not about limiting, but actually making sure that we're preventing them from being, you know, books being banned and, and, and our kids being limited in what their, have access to.
So, is the policy a place where that is? I mean, it seems to me that this policy is just outlining if, if a parent is, is concerned about something, and they want to complain about taking something out, then there's a process. Then you can come here, you can file a complaint. It's been, it looks at, you know, maybe there's something in the library that we didn't know was there, and it was like, oh, my gosh, yes, of course, we need to take this out, right? So, the superintendent looks at that, just makes a decision, what have you. I mean, that, that's what this policy is. It's not talking about the types of books we have. It's not talking about what we should and should not do. It's not talking about concept. It's talking about, this is a policy. So, this is the steps that you could take. If you don't, you know, if, if you need to do that. So, I think our, our view on the policy, from what I'm gathering here, is just the process itself. This is what you can do, not, and it's not looking at what we should do and what we shouldn't do, and what we should have and what we shouldn't have. It's like, if, if it's something that the superintendent can handle, and it's individual, he does it. If he thinks it's something that, it's bigger, then he sends it to committee. Whatever the superintendent and the committee come up with, goes back to that person. That person doesn't like it, then they have an avenue to go back to. Then they can go to the board and say, hey, board, I, so that's what this policy looks like it's trying to say. And so, I think that if we stay within the scope of the policy, if that's what you're trying to, if that's what we're trying to do, then we need to, to, to talk about that. With, with Hilda's, um, suggestion, she's saying, in here, when we talk about complaints are encouraged to, complainants are encouraged to accept the superintendent's or review committee's decision. So, I think what she's saying is add something in here. If it, if it goes to committee, then the super, you know, if somebody's still complaining, then the superintendent will review it. If they, if the superintendent says, no, I stand by the committee, then their next option is to go to the board.
Right.
So, it's saying that the committee would then go to the super. It's not just the committee saying, hey, we don't, you know, we agree, or what have you. So, I, I, I would be okay with if you can wordsmith that in there, but I think, I think that, I think this discussion is bigger than this policy, and I don't know what we're trying to do. If it's, if it's policy, then we need to stick with the policy. And then, what you're talking, you know, all that other stuff is in, is in how you manage the district, and how you manage what's going on, and, and, and that. I, you know, I guess that's how I'm looking at it.
Yeah. I, I, I think you captured, I think, what maybe the hope is, which is just a process. What is that process? You're trying to outline the process, not necessarily trying to define all textbooks, all curriculum. It really is about, someone's unhappy, what's that process? And so, I think, um, you know, that.
So, this is a first read, though?
Yes.
Just a first read. Any other questions or comments on this first read?
Chad, do you have a feel for what we're saying?
Yes, um, and I think it's, it, I, I see what, what, what's being said, and I think we just need to determine what is the true purpose. Is it, is it a policy saying this is the larger scope of what we do in a, in a process? Or, um, more of a, it, the, some of the discussions, I think, get further down into the administrative regulation side of what happens behind the scenes, and what happens as opposed to the larger piece of this, which is broad.
Right.
Yeah.
It's kind of what I hear the discussion moving forward.
And I would look, I would look for more of a specific policy that outlines the process for someone complaining and having concerns on instructional material. So, just adding that, those, like, the three step, right? It'll go to a committee, and if the committee still hasn't found consensus, or whoever's complaining is not still okay with that, then it'll go to the superintendent, and then they can still always come to us, even between that. I, you know, in a sense.
But not everything would go to a committee. I mean.
Start, go to the board, unless it's a broad.
Because it could go to the superintendent, and if the superintendent come to the board. Because he didn't feel it was a committee thing. So, I think that being broad, I mean, because you can't put every single little thing in a policy. You want to try to stay as broad as you can, but be able to interpret it.
So, that's what's intended to be in this, right? So, would it help, though, if it was just bullet pointed, maybe, like step one, two, three, kind of a thing? So, it's a little bit more clear?
Problem is, is then you put everything, okay, for this, the superintendent will do this, and this, and this. And, and I don't think you can do that. I think that.
It's just that there's a process, and every complaint is going to be different. So, that's kind of what I'm taking from it as well, too.
There, there's, what Chad sent us, what CSBA had, and that was more of a.
That's the administrative regulation.
Right. And that's where it says, step one, step two. That's where it talks about it. Informal complaint, formal complaint. When it goes to superintendent. I mean, that's where that comes in. So, again, it's, board policy is general and broad. Regulations are what we need to do internally to make sure that that policy is, is followed. And, and so, I think we, sometimes it's hard to stay out of the weeds when you're looking at board policy, and you want to write everything. But you can't, and, and you shouldn't, because you want to, to try and make it as broad as you can, so you don't have to change it all the time. Or, or you can add things as you need to go along. So, I, you know, I think that if you can capture that stuff in the regulations that make it, you know, somewhere where the superintendent has the authority here.
I think we owe it to the community after recent events to have this discussion, and that's what we're doing. And we wanted to make sure that each of us as board members knew what the process would be. So, in the future, if a parent comes back from active duty, sees something that they're really concerned about, now we have a flow for how these types of complaints get heard. And, um, I'm just glad that we're, that we're having this conversation, and, you know, we promised it to everybody that was here, um, that night a few months ago, and I'm, I'm very pleased with this, um, just this progress.
I have, I have a couple of questions in addition. I think there's no mention of specifically electronic resources, and I'd like to see that added to that first paragraph about, or second paragraph, I guess, about textbooks, supplementary instructional materials, library materials. I think we use electronic resources from learning apps to games, websites, because those can be questioned by families. Um, I also wondered about the role of the librarian, because that is oftentimes a place where kids come home with a book, and parents say, where did this come from? Checked it out from the library. So, I think, um, right now, it says to talk to either the teacher or the principal first, an informal conversation. I don't know if that's a burden we don't want to put on our librarians, because they're not always, I mean, they do, we find out twenty hours a week, you know? But, um, it could be something that we add specifically. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think typically, we want to start at the, like, lowest levels. So, if a parent had a concern, we, yeah, the, probably the first place to start would be with that teacher, with that, um, like, librarian.
Yeah.
And then, you know, a kind of a natural flow would be then if they're not happy with the teacher, they could go to a principal, and then, and then usually from the principal, it's either, it's usually Chad, to be honest, um, but I, I'm usually, uh, right around the corner at that point. Helene, too, or Helene. Okay, so Helene's a big part of this process, too.
And then, my other question was about copyrighted materials, because I know that's something we're exploring right now with the plays, and whether it, I, you know, it's typical for teachers to make annotations or select portions of a text. You know, maybe they read only one chapter of the book in their study session, or their lesson. But there are some texts and artistic materials that are copyrighted, and so to make changes means that we're in violation of that. So, I wondered, um, like, what we need to do as far as when parent, or when teachers are doing that, you know, we can't make changes so much to adjust to either a kid version, or because we want to make it more palatable for the age, that we then violate copyright. So, I don't know if that's the place to put this here, but I, I wondered if we need to have a statement about that.
And, um, social studies books, a couple of years ago, I don't feel correctly if it's not the way it is today. You could, a teacher could go in and change the vocabulary of the piece.
Turner, speak around.
On the computer, and make it easier.
Oh, I'm sorry. Making it easier reading or more difficult reading, depending on the, um, the students in the classroom. And that is changing vocabulary. If that is still in place, then your concern may not be relevant to textbooks or how teachers do things, because they're changing it all the time.
I think the guiding principle is just the law. So, in some things, we can make changes, and some things that we can't. Um, and so, I, in this case, I don't know if you need to write in the policy. I, you know, at this point, we follow copyright laws.
We, we do, to start to interrupt, we do have a separate board policy regarding copyrighted materials. Uh, it's board policy sixty-one, sixty-two point six. It's under the instructional series. So, we already have a board policy regarding copy, the use of copyrighted materials.
And that probably will be addressed once that committee meets and talks about that. Okay, so can we move on? Sorry, just asking if we could, uh.
Are you calling the question on our discussion?
Well, we don't even have a question, so. I'm just, I'm just saying if we have an.
What's the process then for next steps?
I think we're going to try to synthesize today's discussion, and, um, we'll maybe.
Unless Ruthie has more on her list for this, for this policy. I don't want to cut you off, but I also want to stick with this policy.
Yeah. I think, I mean, I have suggested edits. They're small. But I do, I do wonder about adding something more about how we give careful consideration to upholding law, standards, innovation, artistic value. I just think this is so brief, but maybe that's not.
Could you, could you submit that so we can see it somewhere?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the process, right? As we first read, suggestions go out, they send them to us, we look at them, comes back to the next one?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Any other questions, comments on this first reading? Thank you, Dr. Hammond.
Thank you.
For board member requests for future items, um, the recent heat wave got me thinking about cooling centers. It wasn't clear to me that the city of Fullerton had one. I was wondering if I have a second tonight to just ask staff what it might look like, where, we don't have to vote on it. Maybe if we have, if we know that there's going to be four days in a row, or some, some criteria, ninety-five degrees temperatures or higher, for example, something like, uh, a district-operated cooling center, um, and what that might look like. Costs, is it prohibitive? Um, you know, is it unsafe? Something like that. It's hot out there.
We do have air conditioning in all our schools now.
Yes.
And our district office.
Correct. So, I'd like staff to just maybe get back to us on a cooling center.
Would that be during school hours?
It would be maybe during the summer.
Okay. When students are not present. I mean, my concern would be immediately, like, child protection issues. We've talked about safety and monitoring who's on campus, so.
How, how much time would that take to compile for our staff? I mean, is that something reasonable?
Dr. Cooglan?
So, who would use this? I'm so sorry. I don't have a vision here.
Um, so basically, like, our families, people that are affiliated with our district, that may not have access to cooling systems or something breaks down. And so, I was envisioning families, um, that are already part of our district, but a way to let them know, hey, if you're having problems with your cooling.
Like to go to a gym or a multipurpose room.
A library that's not being used. Yeah, something like that.
So, it's not opening the whole campus. It's specific areas.
I, I would second that, to look at it, to look at the price.
Great. Thank you. Any other requests?
Thank you for your concern.
I, I don't know if, um, we are, we have this on the agenda anywhere, but I would love to hear about an update on our community schools, and kind of how the, how the la, the, the first part went, and how, you know, what the service has been over the summer, and just looking at how that's being used, and maybe a little bit of data.
Communicate or a presentation.
It doesn't matter. Might be a time to show off what's going on, since, you know, a lot of people are interested in that. Or, I don't, doesn't matter.
Um, yeah, maybe, maybe an agenda.
We had planned to do a presentation anyways. Probably not in the next two months, but, you know, I think October, November, we could get something together.
Is that all right? And then, maybe, uh, just in the form of a communicate, just an update on the architectural plans for our new gym performing arts centers at Nicholas and Parks? Is that something that you guys would also like to hear?
That's something that we're going to get anyway, right? No? Wouldn't we?
Yes.
Like architectural drawings, where, all that stuff, where we are.
Facilities plan, next steps.
Right. One of the things that's going to happen in, I think it's the first meeting in September, we'd be bringing the facility master plan. We would probably, at that time, also bring an update on the, on the, uh, the arcs or the gyms or.
Great.
If, if September would be fine.
Any other requests? For information, agenda items. All right. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August fifteenth. We are now adjourned at nine twenty-nine P M. Thank you, everybody.